Good morning. It is Monday, August 31st, 2020. It's nine o'clock in the morning and the Kirk County Commissioners' Court is now in session. I want to remind everybody to, you don't have to turn your phones off, but do turn them to silence or vibrate. And remind that anyone that would like to call in for input to the court.
Oh, yeah.
Commissioner Moser, you need to mute your phone because we hear the YouTube about 30 seconds late.
Commissioner, did you hear us?
You will. I'm muting it right now.
Okay, good. For those of you that are wondering what we're doing, Commissioner Moser is attending by teleconference on the phone here on the bench. And what I'm asking you to do, anyone that would like to call in to participate in this meeting, you can call 830-792-6161. And I have it here and it will vibrate and will patch you in. At this point, this is the opportunity where we welcome the public's input. If there's anyone that would like to address the court on a topic that is not on the agenda, this is your opportunity to do so. If the topic is on the agenda, we ask that you wait until that agenda item is called. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address the court? Okay. There not being any, then this will be the opportunity for Commissioners' comments. And let's start in reverse order today. Give Harley a break. Let's start with Precinct Four. Mr. Harris.
It's hot and dry. Very hot and dry. We need some rain and cleaning. I know y'all got a few sprinkles here and there, but we have it. And that's what we need. And so far, it looks like the first two weeks of Ingram ISD School has gone smooth. The volleyball girls are still rolling. I'm sure they're still undefeated and just going down. That's all I have.
Very good. Three.
Well, I knew we were dry. Then I looked at the Keach Byram Index and we're the maximum dry, which is not good news. And much of the state is actually, especially the Hill Country. So we definitely need some rain. From what I can tell, everything's going fine at KISD as well, their schools. Seems to be going pretty much in. Out of Hitch and a few students, or I don't know what percent it is, but a number of them are not, 20, 30% are doing it virtually, but most of them are on campus and seems to be going fine.
Good. Commissioner Moser, do you have anything to comment on?
I'm gonna pass right now, Judge. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Precinct Four.
I ran into a young guy I've known for many years that had been over to East Texas. They're clearing things out for folks that have been through Hurricane Laura. And I asked how it went, who all went, and I knew most of them. He said there was a crew that went from Austin. And I'm going to tell this because I've heard this a couple of times about different kinds of work groups that come from Kirk County. He said this crew from Austin, after it was all over with, said, man, you guys did about 30% more than we did. These guys started in Texas and they ended up in Louisiana and didn't know the difference. They just kept on working. Now, that's our Kirk County boys right there. My son, when he was working in the oil patch, told me the same thing. He overheard some guys talking one day and he says, he said, oh, three kids over there that work circles around everybody else, they're from Kirk County. So we raise folks that know how to work, know how to help. And I just wanted to say to Jake Oliver and all the other kids that went out there, Dustin Taylor and some of the others, that we appreciate what you do and how you represent Kirk County. And God bless you. There's still a lot of people without power and they're still working over there pretty hard.
Good story. Good story. The only thing I would report is that as of Friday, we had no new cases COVID. We had no one in the hospital. We were down to 12 active cases and things are looking up. We're waiting to see how things go with the schools and keep saying your prayers. But this is a far cry from where we were back in June and July. So thanks to all the good work, keep us safe. So with that, let's go on to the consideration agenda. Item 1.1 that I put on the docket is to reconsider and discuss and take appropriate action to rescind or clarify the court order regarding hazard pay for Kirk County Sheriff's Office and jailers and commence a thorough review and study regarding a comprehensive countywide policy regarding hazard pay to include specific required criteria in consultation with Whittlebryne Consultants and applicability of the CARES Act grant reimbursability. That's a long way of saying that I learned a lot after our Commissioners' Court meeting last Monday. You may recall that we discussed whether to have a policy before we had an order. And I do have the draft orders that the clerk has prepared. And proposed order number 38265A is a vote to adopt the policy. But we don't have a policy. We voted to adopt one. We just don't have it. And that proved problematic as I came back, came out of Commissioners' Court and started dealing with the various other people here at the courthouse and their eligibility for hazard pay. And I found that it was problematic to not have that policy. And I don't know what the law is on that. I'll defer to the county attorney. But I do remember that we had a discussion last week about needing to have a policy. And we voted to have one. We just don't have it yet.
Also, Judge, we voted to do this as it came up department by department, if you recall. So that the Sheriff's Department could go ahead and get started with it and we would deal with it. So basically, that is a de facto policy that you deal with as you go with the other departments. That was to kickstart it and get it going.
Well, I understand. And that was our intent. And then we got down to voting on the actual order and Commissioner Moser abstained on that one and pointed out that we really did need to have a policy, not just a floating policy.
Judge, I thought y'all adopted a policy that limited it to $5.
We did.
And it would comply with whatever guidelines were in the act for those who are eligible for it. And then you adopted the, or you passed the order that permitted it to go to the Sheriff's Department and jail for $5. So I thought that you did adopt a policy.
And no other department could exceed $5 per hour. So that was, that's policy enough as far as I'm concerned.
That's the groundwork.
And this is a special extenuating circumstances, too. I don't think that if we're going to set policy like that, that it needs to necessarily be done with this. You have grant guidelines. You have, and basically what we did last time, what we voted on could as easily a policy.
We have a policy, but we don't have a very clear policy.
And we're not following grant guidelines. That's what I learned. First thing I learned is what this $5 a person in the Sheriff's Department is going to cost, which is $475,940. And if we're not right in doing this, then that's not reimbursable. And so there is risk to the taxpayers that we could be responsible for that and it not be a pass through under the CARES Act. And so I want to make sure that we comply with those grant requirements.
So what's the consultant going to cost us?
The consultants paid for out of the grant. That's the one reason we have the grant. And let me point out-
What's going to come out of the grant, right?
Yes.
Okay, so there's money right there if we pursue that consultancy that comes out of the grant.
We already have them on board. I worked with them last week. I worked with them Friday.
All right. And I don't recall what they're getting out of the grant, though.
What percentage?
Yeah, what percentage?
Well, they don't get, there's a limit of 5% is what the limitation in the grant is. But they don't necessarily get that. This is a per diem. Yeah. They charge us per diem. And I think that's, what figure is about maybe up to $70,000?
Our contract said $250,000.
Yeah.
Because if we're talking about saving money, then that needs to be considered also. What you're going to pay a consultant to tell you what you can pay somebody else. That's what we're talking about.
Yes. And those funds are reimbursable from the CARES Act, from the coronavirus relief fund, the CRF. But in visiting with them, I found out that we are not complying with the requirements in the grant. Number one, we're doing this across the board by department. And we're really required to evaluate everybody individually, depending on what their positions are. And that, in fact, the specific frequently asked questions say that across the board, we're not supposed to do it. The answer was no, to do that. And we had that discussion with them. The other thing that I found out was that you can't put in an order, which we did, the order that we passed, that it is to be terminated when the funds, when their funds are no longer available. And that clearly contemplates the CARES Act funds. And that is a red flag in the grant world. Federal government does not like to see that. The federal government wants to give us the money to provide for local needs and not just have us spend the money because they've given us the money and made it available to us. We're in uncharted waters because this is the first time that I can remember, and in talking with our grant people, that they've had to deal with, when the government has given us the money before we have spent it. This is a disaster relief. And usually what we're doing is scrambling, getting together receipts together, getting them to the government to get them approved for reimbursement. In other words, we pay and then we seek to be reimbursed. This is one where, because of the pandemic, the government got the money to us before we've been able to spend it. And so that's one of the issues. And because we specifically referenced in that order that it terminates when we run out of those funds, that's something that the Whittlebryne Consultants recommend that we not put in.
Well, it automatically terminates if you're out of money.
Well, we all know that, but it's better not to say it. Because if you say it, it's a red flag to the federal auditors when they're auditing-
That you intend to use it up?
Pardon?
The federal government likes you to use stuff up so they can get more.
But they want it to be on the basis of necessity and not just the availability of funds.
I understand the concept, but it doesn't sound like the federal government I know.
Yeah. And the policy that, I'm not sure I really appreciated that the policy was to be department by department. But that's not the way Whittlebryne explained it to us, as how it should be. The bottom line is that hazard pay is available for eligible employers. And there are three categories and then an additional one. And that is public safety, public health, human services, and similar employees whose services are substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to COVID-19. And they must perform hazardous duty or work involving physical hardship. And it has to be something additional than their regular pay. There's an analysis between regular pay and hazard pay. And so this has to be something in addition to regular pay.
So if we're going to do these by individual review, shouldn't that go through department heads and elected officials?
Yes. And that's the policy that I envision and I would recommend that we do, is that people that believe that they're entitled to hazard pay, and this is true whether it's in one of the three specified categories, public safety, public health, and human services, or if they're just one of the similar employees that are substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to the COVID crisis, submit an application to their department head or official of the office. And then that in turn goes to HR. And we have a review committee that works with the auditor, who is pretty much our go-to person on grants, and to the grant administrator, which is me. And I would recommend that we include the liaison commissioner because he knows more about what goes on in HR than anybody else. But we've got to have some kind of review process. We've got to have a paper trail.
A committee. Well, that being the case, then I can't, I don't anticipate any department head saying to one of their employees, no.
I don't either.
So that means everybody. Might as well just say everybody. The sheriff made the case for having everybody in his entire department receive hazard pay. I don't anticipate that being different upstairs, downstairs, wherever you go in any department.
Well, I thought it was awfully easy just to do the sheriff's department because to all of us at the time, it seemed like, you know, it's cut and dry. You know, it's sort of like everybody wants to be cowboys till it comes time to do cowboy work. And that's what it looks like here. And that, to me, it was just very easy to say sheriff's department. Then we'll get to these others based on job performance or in and around the COVID or whatever.
Well, let me cut to the chase. What Whittlebryne told us, the example they used, we all agree first responders should be receiving hazard pay. But there's some limitations. And the example that they used was the difference between the hazards and the physical hardship that a patrol deputy encounters versus one a dispatcher. That was the specific example. And the risk evaluations are different for each. And therefore, in making the paper trail on this thing, we've got to have a paper trail for these auditors to see why. First responders is pretty easy. They can sit down and just write down what they do every day and that's going to pass muster. On some of these, and for the maximum amount, the $5 an hour, okay, which is our policy. But the other evaluations, we don't have. We just said blanket across the board, and they're telling us we're not supposed to do it across the board. We're supposed to evaluate each category, each job type and what they do. And jailers and patrol are the ones that are at most risk.
But it allowed for that department by department, the way I understand it, the way the county attorney described it a minute ago from her memory of it.
Right. I mean, I don't think there's a question that, what we didn't do is define the criteria.
True. But I thought the grant did that.
Well, the grant doesn't do it, but the stacks of federal guidelines do. But you've got to go through that and figure out exactly what you're doing. I mean, I have read through the sheriff's, they handed me documents. I read them. And he and I look at them and interpret them slightly differently. It's how you dramatically divide up a paragraph. And that becomes the issue. And we need to have guidance, I think, from our consultants as to how we do it. Otherwise, I mean, that's why we hire the consultants, because we're not experts on this. And I think that we need to have criteria so that we're not arbitrary saying, okay, the county clerk gets, a district clerk doesn't. We've got to have a guideline to say, well, this one gets it, this employee or this position gets it because it meets A, B, C, and D. If you meet A, B, C, sorry. And we need assistance from a consultant to make that determination, I think.
Well, this is going to get complicated and bogged down because you're going to go from saying that they deserve an extra $5 an hour, saying they deserve an extra 35 cents an hour, or whatever it is, and be mitigated and go back from what Commissioner Harris was saying, which was one is a no-brainer. And these other ones, you're going to have to scratch your head and think about it a while and get out your slide rule.
But what our consultant was telling us is that by doing it across the board for the entire department, we have not conducted the individual risk evaluations that we're supposed to.
But department heads will have to do that?
Pardon?
Department heads will be responsible for that. Because we can't do it.
Judge, let me say something if I may.
Go ahead.
If you can hear me. Can you hear me okay?
Oh, yeah.
I think, you know, I think, Judge, I'm really glad you brought this back up, okay? So we could discuss this, the fact that we don't have a policy. And that was my problem last Monday when I abstained on this. I think it's very important. I've thought a lot about that since then. And as we look at the various departments around the county, and we look at risk in their jobs, there's no question that the Sheriff's Department has higher risk. Forget COVID for a moment. They are higher risk. The road and bridges is at risk. Animal control is at risk. So how much do we increase the risk in their job because of COVID? If you look at that in perspective, and I think that's what we need to consider in the policy, you know, there's like, everybody tested in the county right now is 6% of the people are positive. That's the people that have symptoms that are tested primarily. That's a low percentage. So if you just encounter people in the county, you're probably down to 1% or 2% of the people at most have COVID. So how much risk have our employees really encountered because of COVID? If you say, well, there's something, but yet to compensate for that increased risk, which I think is not really high, okay, then we've got a pot of money. Some things that the consultant will help us guide through, that's what we need to use that money for, for protection, Plexiglas, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, all kinds of expenses. But then again, it's not free money. All of us are paying taxes for that money that the federal government's giving us. Kirk County is not giving it specifically. So I think we need to clearly look at, seriously, how much risk our various departments are looking at. So I think that that's what, that needs to be incorporated in the policy. So that's my comments.
Commissioner, I agree with that. But one thing I want to add is, what separates it is, can you mitigate the risk? And I think that's why patrol deputies, they don't have an option to be able to mitigate the risk. They have to go and deal with the public one-on, very close situations, one-on-one. They don't have a choice there. Whereas if you take the, you know, any of our office staff in the courthouse, we put up Plexiglas. They've socially distanced both of the public and internally in the office. So they've mitigated their risk. And I think you have to look at the mitigation issue as to who qualifies.
Okay.
I better not say it.
Oh, go ahead, Don.
We're getting bogged down. Good grief. It just doesn't make sense. To me, again, it looked like it pretty easy to just say sheriff's department, jailers, all those. I mean, it goes without saying, they're at risk. I mean, they have to react spontaneous to whatever aggression or whatever they encounter. Same way out here in the hallway. Our deputies out here. I mean, the other day I walked out there and there's like four people stacked up waiting to get in the tax office or the clerk's office or one of those. And they're around people as much or more than the people inside almost. So there's varying degrees of this and it's going to get bogged down in trying to figure something out.
Well, I can tell you, there were four of us on the conference call Friday morning. And we had our HR director, we had our auditor, we had an assistant, one of your deputy auditors. And when we hung up from that phone call, we were all alarmed. And I called an immediate meeting back here at the courthouse. And we brought Jonathan into it to sit down and talk about this, try to work through, how do we fix the problem? Because there is no reason for us to put ourselves at risk. People need to understand that we're going to be audited. There is a clawback provision in these grants. And if we don't do it right, we're not going to get reimbursed. And if we do get reimbursed and they go back and audit it, and these audits can go on for five to seven years. Disaster control audits go on for almost forever. And if they look back and say, we did not adequately document and evaluate the risk for each person that we give this to, not just a department. It's easy to say a department. And what Whittlebryne was telling us, you really need to evaluate the individuals and exactly what they do. Just a minute, Sheriff, please.
I'm not saying anything.
Well, then go ahead. Take the floor, Sheriff. What you got?
I'm waiting on you. I wasn't finished. I wasn't going to interrupt you.
Well, you and I have this conversation, then our consultants tell us that we're in trouble with what we've done. And we need to fix it. And we came up with-
Did they offer a fix?
They do eligibility memos. And then we can present departments, classes, categories of employees to them. And they'll give us a paper review that we can put in the file to say, we have relied in good faith on what they've told us works and doesn't. And then what they're telling us, we ought to do one, too. And so that's what I'm trying to do. I don't want the taxpayers of this county to end up having to pay $475,940 out of their pocket because we were too hasty and too enthusiastic to do this by department when we're being cautioned not to do it by department. When we did it by making it dependent upon the availability of the CARES Act funds, which we're not supposed to do. When we haven't enumerated what these criteria are. The simple criteria that we came up with on Friday, and it took us what, hour, hour and a half to do this, is we've got those sections, public safety, public health, human services. And then we have to have the similar that's substantially dedicated to, let me get the wording right, to mitigating or responding to the COVID-19. And then we said that the duties, because you have to compare what's regular pay versus hazard pay, we said it needs to be above and beyond your regular duties due to COVID, to tie it directly to COVID and to be above and beyond your regular duties. We recommended that there must be a risk of additional hazard duty or physical hardship. That there's got to be something new, not just something that you've done before. And that the exposure cannot be mitigated. That's huge, that the exposure cannot be mitigated. If you're behind Plexiglas or using PPE, or if you're working remotely, then that's mitigation. And then finally, we said that we want to follow the CDC guidelines. And with these jailers, if you just think about the jailers and the patrol deputies, that you are less than six feet social distancing. If you've got to arrest somebody, you're on. If you've got to take somebody, put somebody back into jail cell, you don't have a choice. That's less than six feet. And then it has to be for longer than 15 minutes. Those are the CDC guidelines. And so those are the criteria that we're trying to establish to have a policy so that we can review and put the paperwork in the file. And so when the federal auditors come along, we can pull out our file and say, Whittlebryne said A, okay. These are the enumerated risks that these people face. And this is the evaluation that we think they would qualify for hazard pay. And we don't have a paper trail. We're just doing it across the board. And that's what they told us we shouldn't be doing.
Well, you mentioned that they have to be at risk above and beyond the normal call of duty.
Yes.
That's only one of the factors. It could be something else. It's not necessarily that that one has to be applied. You could apply another one. You don't have to have them all in there. So the way this thing reads is, the position must serve in one of the following capacities. Now, is that then supposed to tell us that all four of these criteria here, duties performed must be above and beyond the regular, there must be a risk additional hazard in performing their duty with the public, that exposure cannot be mitigated, and use of PPP is considered mitigation? Are you saying all of those have to be in place or one of them has to be in place?
What Whittlebryne is telling us is to have those criteria and evaluate them. And if somebody meets one, then maybe you score them a little lower than somebody that meets all of them. Our first responders meet all of these.
Yeah, right.
Clearly. And these were actually promulgated, or we formulated them, saying, we know that's what they experienced. And so we want them to be qualified to get this hazard pay. And so we ticked this off. And if we've got applicants for this, they're going to say, yes, 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 yes. And if you get five yeses, let's say you get a score of five. If you get four yeses, you got to score four. There's a difference in the risk about, that's what they want to see, is the difference in evaluating the risk of each person that gets this hazard pay. And not just everybody gets the same thing. The cookie cutter approach is going to get us into trouble.
Okay. Well, that's one of my main concerns when we first started talking about this is not just putting it out there, all these different departments, and then Kirk County residents, taxpayers are on the hook for it later on because it doesn't qualify. The auditor and I spoke last week about it, and that was both of our main concerns, that who's going to qualify, that if we do this, that we're not on the hook for it down the road. It doesn't apply to the grant. So.
Well, this isn't like the grant, for example, that put in the sewer system in East Kirk County. That's not something anybody's in a hurry with. As you mentioned before, Judge, these funds came to us before there were any real fixed guidelines, before anybody knew what to do with them. Everything about this year has been different. It's been topsy-turvy. It's been sideways, one-wheel wobbling. And so for us to have done what we did last week, I don't think that there was anything unusual or weird or lack of thought behind it.
But we need to fix some of it.
We may need to fix it now. So and these are good guidelines. But this is going to slow down the whole process. And that's what we were trying to avert a little bit.
Sure.
We don't want to run ahead and get in trouble. And I understand what you're talking about with them clawing back these funds. I don't, you can't run that risk because the taxpayers are on the hook for it. But we still want to help our county- But we still want to help our county employees as well.
I agree 110%. But, but the problem is, we cannot give them hazard pay for hazards in the past, that they've, they've, they've been exposed to in the past. It's got to be present and future. And the truth of the matter is that we flattened the curve on this thing. We've knocked it down. The worst is behind us, I hope. Uh, but I still want to do hazard pay for the people that still have, are exposed to this. The truth of the matter is, we should have been doing this back in June.
We didn't know.
Back in June.
Right.
Should have.
Yeah.
And so what, all I'm advocating is, give us time to put together a policy and a process that is defensible. And I think we went giant steps on Friday. We may be one meeting away from being able to complete this whole thing. Uh, but it needs to be done before we start making across-the-board blanket cookie cutter decisions.
So is the idea that we take-
Agreed.
Pardon?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Agreed with you 100%.
Is the idea that we take these, um, I don't know, these points, uh, I don't know what else to call them, and make some kind of a checklist out of them? If they complete the checklist and they get $5 an hour, if they get four and they get four, how is that going to work? Because that's a whole nother session.
Well, and that's why, uh, what my suggestion would be, that we have, um, applications, and whether they're individual applications or by supervisor applications that they're recommending, I don't know. But we need to have some kind of initial paperwork initiating this process. And there needs to be different levels of review. There needs to be a departmental and office level review and recommendation.
And there needs, there needs to be different levels of compensation.
Right.
Yes. That was, that was recommended, that, that we evidence our good faith by not doing everything cookie cutter.
I think the, the sheet that we've worked on, that everyone's looked at, to me, that goes, if that's what we adopt, goes to department head's lucky officials, they look at it, and then come back to us based on their position schedule, not individual employee name, we want to go by their position schedule, what their job duties are.
Yes.
And see who qualifies and who doesn't, in their opinion. And then under the judge's scenario, uh, a small committee will look at it and make a recommendation to the court.
So does that mean that this is going to, we'll vote on this as policy?
We could.
We could move forward with this.
I don't, I'm, I'm looking over at our HR, she drafted the memo.
Are you happy with this?
Pretty much. The one thing that it doesn't have, I can tell you right now, I was, you know, I read it a few times since we did it Friday at lunch. We have it provided for the similar employees, which we need to include if they substantially dedicated to the, uh, defending the COVID.
Okay, and that, that word concerned me because that was not part of the grant criteria for CARES Act. You know, Tany is the, the grant person, so if that, that similar were intended, right?
Well, it's an answer to number 38 to the frequently asked questions that we've all been interviewing this weekend.
That's kind of a vague term.
A lot of them vague, unfortunately.
Yeah. I, I think it's intentionally vague probably right now because nobody knows how this is going to fall out.
Yes, it is, just one second. One quick drop in the dials, just a second.
And one of the overarching concerns that I have is, we have to remember that this is not free money. These are federal tax dollars. And we are accountable. And they're expecting us to honor our fiduciary duty to our taxpayers and that we're doing this because it's really necessary and not just because we have the money available. Uh, that's, that's very important for us to remember.
Well, it might not even need to be said, but you know, you have a sheriff's deputy going down the road, they got to stop and help somebody. They don't have time to get a mask, they don't have time to do any of the stuff that people do when they're behind the Plexiglas screen.
That's right.
And tell them you'll be next in line. Much different, much different thing. So that's why we moved forward last week with-
That's right.
Trying to help the sheriff department.
Cowboys do their cowboy's work.
And this is not for past, this is what will happen today.
I know.
Tomorrow.
But it, but we didn't, we didn't differentiate between the risk of a first responder, an actual first responder, and support staff back in the office. And that's, that's what Whit O'Brien was telling us. We haven't evaluated that. We haven't made any provision for that.
Well, we asked questions about it, and the sheriff said that everybody was at risk in his department.
I know. And, and when I talked to, uh, the, uh, Carolina Van Horn, who was the Whit O'Brien, uh, policy lead for the Midwest, uh, Midwestern America, uh, that was the, I didn't even bring it up. She brought up the example and says, you have to evaluate dispatchers and patrol first responders differently. They're not the same.
That was my point last week with the sheriff, I couldn't see the administrative staff being the same as the first responder.
Now, people in the jail, man, my hat comes off to them.
Yeah.
That's a rough place.
Yeah, they're, they're a notch above the deputies, I, in my opinion, for their on-the-job risk.
And I want to do this. Don't get me wrong, folks, I want to do this. I just want to do it right. I don't want to put the taxpayers at risk because we got a too big a hurry.
Well, we've all mentioned that. That was our concern. We don't want to spend money and then, you know, the foot gone for not doing it right, so.
According to the guidelines, were the coronavirus relief fund guided from state, territorial, local, and tribal departments that date on June 30th, 2020? The non-exclusive examples of eligible expenditures, number three, is payroll expenses for public safety, public health, healthcare, human services, and similar employees whose services are substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to the COVID-19 public health emergency. Number six on that list states, any other COVID-19-related expenses reasonably necessary to the function of government that satisfy the fund's eligibility criteria.
So you got similar and reasonably.
And now, in fact, if you say, I have some issues, and I think-
Thank you, Judge, notice this. With different rulings and different opinions from your consultants. Number one, the court order y'all passed last week had been renewed and approved by the consultants. They recommended changes to it. And I gave y'all that, it's in, in red on the order. They want it added and is affecting the ability of employees to safely conduct their regular duties. And then down farther in the order, they wanted added these, the words, these unprecedented kinds. And then they wanted added, right after the $5 per hour, they wanted $5 hazard pay per hour. They approved this before I ever brought it to you. The county attorney looked at it. Everybody looked at it, and it got approved. Because it was under the first responder, like most other counties are using the definition under the Families First Coronavirus Response Act as to who are first responders. And in the, the guideline, it specifically even states that question 124, would hazard pay for essential employees' first responders who have been working during the COVID-19 response be reimbursable under the CRF? If so, for what time? The answer to that question was yes, as long as hazard pay is not a budgeted item. CRF funds can't cover items that are covered in an applicant's budget, most recent budget, straight salaries and straight time. I agree with that. This allowable timeframe is from March 1st, 20th to December 30th, 20. I agree with that. Now, if you look at the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, questions and answers, under the Department of Labor, under who is emergency first responders, in amongst other things, it says, law enforcement officers, correctional institution personnel, uh, emergency management personnel, 911 operators, as well as individuals who work for such facilities, employing these individuals, whose work is necessary to maintain the operation of the facility. Now, that includes all my clerks and everybody else. Dispatchers are automatic, not operating.
Well, it includes maintenance, too.
If they're in my facility. And during the first, that's a good point, even later, the HR director, in her first email back to the county judge enlisting who could be eligible for it, said directly, maintenance workers would only be eligible for hazard pay when working in the SORJ. So everybody was in agreement. Then I get a call from the judge saying that the courthouse is blowing up, it's on fire because everybody's trying to figure a way because of the guidelines to get it, and they want to redo it. Why do my people get thrown under the bus to get it redogged?
No one will throw the sheriff's department under the bus. No, we are not.
Now, the argument you made about it can't be a blanket, I agree with. Question 38 in the code, in the guideline says, may payments from the fund be used to cover across-the-board hazard pay for employees during, working during a state of emergency? And that answer is no. I totally agree. That goes on though, after the word no, the guidance says, funding may be used to meet payroll expenses for public safety, public health care, public health, healthcare, human services, and similar employees who are substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to COVID-19 public health emergency. Hazard pay is a form of payroll expense and subject to this limitation. So fund payments can only be used to cover hazard pay for these individuals. It doesn't say I have to give you what each of those individuals' job duties are. They're the first responders. Now, in the first part of that, under number two question, the guidance says-
Sheriff, before we get away, before we get away from number 38 that you just read.
I didn't interrupt you, Judge, please don't interrupt me.
Do you get anywhere, hear us up here, talk to the county's office? I understand.
I'd be more than happy to respond, but, or let you respond, but let me finish what I'm presenting.
Well, we're trying to keep on task here. Nobody is disputing first responders qualifying. No one. But the question was, may payments from the fund be used to cover across-the-board hazard pay for employees working during a state of emergency? And the answer was clearly no.
For employees. It wrote out the employees it is eligible for.
But not across the board.
But across the board, he's using the term in department sense. You're using it in terms of countywide.
You're using it to my individual employees. I'm saying, it's not across, it says, public safety. Boom, that's up. That's sheriff's fault. And under the definition of first responder, that is sheriff's fault.
Correct.
Okay?
But it doesn't say they're all the same.
What I'm saying is, no, it doesn't, nothing in here says that it has to say they're all the same. All right? Now, the difference is courthouse employees, that's a whole different department. Okay? That has to be evaluated. The clerk has to give you what their duties are and why they're needed. The county clerk, the, you know, tax assistant, they have to break that out. That's your differences. All right?
And we do not disagree that your employees are eligible. But the question is, we haven't done the risk evaluations.
Now, there's nothing in there that says that, Judge.
But nothing says they all get the same amount either.
But our order said not to exceed $5. As a department head, he can determine what he wants him to get.
Now, the other field, the other field the judge was saying about, let me go on, please, mitigating, that it has to be substantially, and let me read the question, number two. I'll read it directly, so it's coming straight from TDS. The guidance says that funding can be used to meet payroll expenses for public safety, public health, healthcare, human services, and similar employees whose services are substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to the COVID-19 health emergency. How does a government determine whether payroll expenses for a given employee satisfy the substantially dedicated? And he's wanting us to say what our job duties are. Okay? The fund, the answer is, the fund is designed to provide ready funding to address unforeseen financial needs and risks created by the COVID-19 health emergency. For this reason, as a matter of administrative convenience, in light of the emergency nature of this program, a state, territorial, local, or tribal government may presume that payroll costs for public health and public safety employees are payments for services substantially dedicated or mitigating or responding to the COVID-19 public health emergency. Unless the chief executive or equivalent or the relevant government determines that specific circumstances otherwise are indicate otherwise. So all their duties you can presume. That's what it says. This is black and white.
You do.
No, you want me to spell out an application what they're doing?
Russell, you can tell me that your dispatchers are the same exact risk as patrol deputies?
The dispatcher, yes, I told y'all that the other day, because every patrol deputy's box is, they're having to go in constantly into our dispatcher. I had a dispatcher take FMLA and was, wait a minute, was approved by the doctor because of her having a, a special needs child and being at risk of COVID, being one of my dispatchers, and the doctors and the federal government approved that for FMLA leave. Okay? They are having that risk, all my people, the, the jailers are in there.
The same risk is what I'm saying.
Yes, it is. I know.
What do you think a federal auditor is going to do on this? Do you think they're going to believe everything that you're saying right here, that a dispatcher has the exact same risk and exposure as a patrol deputy?
Or a jailer?
No. The other thing is, the county judge has said, and he said it this morning, and he said it to me, okay? In an email he sent to me, is that the grant is clear that hazard pay cannot apply retroactively, yet your reasoning seems to be based more on what they were exposed to previously than the present situation. Let me read you question number 46 in the grant. Guidance. Is retroactive payment of hazard pay to public safety, public works, and parts employees back to March to date an eligible cost? Your, your consultants said, no, you can't go retroactive. Our county judge is saying, no, you can't go retroactive. The state is saying, answer yes. As long as hazard pay is not a budgeted item, CRF funds can't cover items that are covered in a jurisdiction's most recent budget, regular salaries or straight time. Additionally, because our hazard pay is a form of payroll expense, CRF funds may only be used for the hazard pay of public safety, public health, healthcare, human services, and similar employees whose services are substantially dedicated, which you can assume, to the mitigating or responding to the COVID-19. I don't know how much clearer you get than what's written in black and white in TDS guidelines. Okay? But what y'all are trying to do is throw out my people, saying, we're going to back up and we're going to start all over. And what I saw in the judge's, in his actual agenda, is back up, take a study, a thorough study and look at. I've seen this county do thorough studies. This may come back up next year.
I want it to come up next week. Next week.
I don't appreciate what's happened. It went through-
Why, why can't we just tap the brakes and fix this problem, Sheriff? And come back next week and adopt a policy and get this benefit to your employees as quickly as we can and protect the taxpayers from any liability.
Because your, your proposed policy doesn't even track what it says. The definition, the, the Office of Personnel Management of the US Government defines, these are the ones that are going to enforce all these guidelines and all this stuff. They define hazardous duty. What is considered hazardous duty or duty involving physical hardship? Hazardous duty is duty performed under circumstances in which an accident could result in serious bodily injury or death. Duty involving physical hardship is duty that may not in itself be hazardous, but causes extreme discomfort, physical discomfort, or distress, and is not adequately alleviated by protective or mechanical devices.
We don't, we don't dispute that. What's the issue?
That's what I'm wondering. Why aren't we backing up on all this? There was a policy- There was a policy that was adopted last week to do it just like Harvey said, by department. I presented it to you for my department, and I presented the understanding why. And it was looked at and it was approved by your consultants. Okay? And it was looked at and approved by the county attorney. And now because, just because everybody else at the courthouse blew up over it, we're going to rescind it.
That's not the case.
That is, because that's exactly what it was. It went on the agenda without me even being notified. I had to call about it. And when I called, if you want me to play you the phone call that said it was because of the courthouse blew up, I'll play it right now. Because that's what it was. The phone call says, nobody in my employ, nobody was questioning any of my employees. All right? What they wanted to do was back up because of-
And then we should have followed Commissioner Moser's advice then and waited for a policy. And then we went to that.
The policy was adopted, it was a guideline.
It's not an adequate policy.
You adopted it?
And it's right, and we're going to rescind it.
Okay? And let's call the other item that I put on the agenda, because that's what I asked the county attorney to adopt the order passing for my employees. Are you going to rescind the policy? And you're going to rescind my order today? And I had another, it's an amendment to it to pass an order. Because, the thing is, gentlemen, and what I have an issue with is, and I responded to Judge Kelly, because he kept trying to say he's going to protect the taxpayers, and I agree with that 1,000%. I think we should. Okay? You know, I don't have any problem with that. But there was a, the agenda item, when it was even done to hire the consultants, or even before that, you know, the guidelines of this came out, made appointment. Okay? Y'all passed the deal, and at first, if you read the minutes, it says to, to bring back and interview consultants. But when it got passed, right, the motion that was made in that same agenda item that passed it, was Jonathan making the motion saying, we authorize the county judge to secure the grant basis. Not even to interview or bring back to the court. I've never seen that happen in all my years with this candidate that just gave blanket hire, whichever one, you won. And the firm was hired to advise, the firm was hired to advise of eligibility expenses. Why was it until I brought up hazard pay at a budget workshop two and a half weeks ago, or three weeks ago now, did our consultants never say anything about hazard pay as one of your eligible things that you could do? This could have been hashed out a long, a long time ago. Okay? But they never said they were supposed to advise you of what's eligible. So why is it the first time we ever talked about hazard pay when I brought it up? Did they tell y'all it was eligible and it was ignored? What happened? My entire office, and I'm going to read this, because he said, why are we in such a hurry? My entire office has had to watch as most of the other county offices either closed, cut back to three-day work week, and were still paid in full, some of those being departments under your control and the court's control, not elected officials. My office has watched as this county spent thousands of dollars in shields, and the offices still remain closed or only part the open. They have watched when the office closed, forced our citizens to stand out in the hallways, and our courthouse security officer, my deputies, courthouse security, our sheriff's office employees. I had that question brought up. Why should they, you know, why should they be under the sheriff's? How can you not consider, their deputy sheriff, I assigned him to the courthouse. The courthouse having to deal with them directly in the offices because the offices would not let those citizens in, all the time knowing that the sheriff's office employees were dealing with them themselves directly. I have watched as our so-called experts in your words say, I don't know. And that's the exact word you used with me on the phone the other day, Judge, is that the experts, the consultants said, I don't know. And have approved one order and now disapproved it. These experts this entire time either never advised that my employees were eligible for hazard pay or if it was ignored. The entire time, from at least May, the funds were given, and or when the experts were hired, my employees have been day in and day out exposed to hazardous duty. Without ever complaining, they are still being exposed every minute without any type of compensation. If you read the definition of hazardous duty, pay above, or hazard duty, it states hazardous duty or work involving physical hardship. Although everyone agrees that they are eligible, nobody now wants to stand up for them and put them first. You want to, again, root them in with the rest of the county employees and quote, do a thorough review and study, in your own words, on the agenda item. All this time, my employees will still be exposed. You even alluded in your email that this may be over before my employees. All of them get any type of compensation for what they're going through during this entire endeavor. It has already been at least over two months since the experts were hired. I don't think I'm rushing anything. Lastly, I'm not sure I agree with the additions Jennifer has added to your guidelines. As above in the definition of hazardous duty, it does not state additional hazardous duty. It states hazardous duty. It just states hazardous duty. Also, I can find anywhere in the guidelines that it says it has to be for duty beyond their regular duties. They're doing their regular duties and are exposed to it doing those regular duties. I would also remind you that we have constantly witnessed CDC guidelines constantly changing. Right? There's nothing in these guidelines anywhere that talks about CDC guidelines and what should be part of your criteria. It's not in anything from T D. It's not on anything from the Department of Labor, or in anything from the Department of, or the Treasury Department that put this out. This is something y'all, some are wanting to put into this. And my deal is, I would truly appreciate, and I appreciate the deal that, I think you do, you need to look at the other employees, and they have to other counties, and they county departments, and they have to justify that, because they're not under public safety. They're not under the first responder. So they should have dictate out what you're talking about. But my department is already covered. It is black and white in these guidelines, it's covered. The consultants had no problem with it at first, and now they do. They're saying it can't be retroactive, the guidelines say directly it can be. Gentlemen, I just ask you to continue the order or reissue that same order that I said. You know, you talked about the funding is a big no-no. Okay? I don't know of any contract this county gets entered, I haven't seen any many that don't start out by saying available, if available funding is available. Okay? If funding is available. But you know, if you want, because it's on the agenda as an amended item, and you want to re-adopt that order, then I think you plainly can, and you want to leave out those words, even though they have already been approved once by the consultants, then fine.
Which words?
The funding.
Funding.
In the order it had about the funding.
Now, you're talking about retroactive funding, is that-
I haven't asked for it.
Okay. But typically, that's a reimbursement. Right? I mean, if you go retroactive, it's because you had to spend the money and you get reimbursed on something.
And I think retroactive means all my people are eligible for it from the time it first came out, and they approved it March 30th, or whatever it says in here, to the president. But I haven't asked for it.
I'm talking about the money, but you haven't asked for that. You're from here forward talking about it.
I asked for it in that order, August the 30th on.
Question that I've been trying to ask you, and you neither don't hear me or don't want to answer it. You say, or you're telling me that every one of your employees should get the same maximum amount that they're all equally at risk?
That's what I've asked for.
So you're saying your clerks are as at risk as the correctional officers?
Yes.
I disagree.
How do you know? Have you been out there and seen what my clerks do, Jonathan? Do you know what they're made of? Do you know that my clerks are the ones that go out and check the temperature and ask the questions directly, without any shields or protection?
Well, that's their choice, not wear a shield.
It's not their choice.
Yes, it is. Rusty, anyone can put a shield or a mask on.
I'm talking these plexiglass shields y'all got everywhere. We don't have that choice. Okay? None of them. The clerks in the jail don't have that choice. I got medical, I got medical clerks in the jail.
I'm not talking about it. I'm talking about your office work.
Yes, they are.
Well, I have a question about-
And this court agreed with that in that last order. Now because everybody else wants to complain, you don't agree.
No, it has nothing to do with other people complaining, it's a matter of following the guidelines set out.
It follows the guidelines.
I'd like to hear from the county attorney, what's your assessment of everything? As far as the grand codes and everything? What's that?
Is there a specific question?
No, what do you, but what do you, well, I guess that there is. Well, how do you feel about what we passed last week?
Let me put a finer point on that. What's wrong with saying that we would authorize hazard pay not to exceed five bucks, subject to the rules of the grant? How is that a problem?
I don't think that it's wrong necessarily, which is why I gave advice that you could do that last week.
Right. So I don't see what the problem is with what we had, and Commissioner Letts, you've said you thought it was insufficient, and the judge has said he thought it was insufficient. Where is it insufficient?
I think it's on the implementation of it. I think that we need to have criteria as to justify it. The rest of the office is pretty simple. They all qualify.
Which is why we passed it.
Right. And they all qualify, do they all qualify the same amount? The sheriff says yes. To me, it's questionable.
But he's the department head, he's going to make the decision anyway. We can't review all of his people.
I chose that five dollars. I could have said $20 an hour. Like, there is no limit in this grant. I could have said $2 an hour. I looked at it and felt $5 an hour for my employees was sufficient. I didn't want to blow this thing way up and get things that are ridiculous. Okay? A lot of counties are using $6 an hour. A lot of counties are using $700 a week. I felt $5 an hour, that was strictly to the pay, to hours worked, okay? And not subject to time and a half at overtime or any of that kind of stuff. It's straight hours worked. If they were off, they were sick, they were on vacation, they don't get it. It's hours worked, $5 an hour.
I don't think necessarily, this goes back to the, I think what your attorney asked me, I don't think you necessarily have to rescind the order, but if you want to adopt criteria to clarify that order, you're able to do that. And so if you, and so you can proceed without rescinding the order, and you can proceed both orders and adopt criteria for the rest of the departments. And I think that's consistent with Rusty's saying, is that his folks across the board fit. They fit. The consultants said they fit. The consultants had an opportunity to weigh in, they did. And so now if you adopt criteria for the rest of the employees for Kirk County, then I think you can still, I think it still fits with the goals. And trying to better define what happens next for everybody else who has been working under hazardous conditions.
So in other words, even if we pass something that's countywide, it's not going to change anything with the sheriff's department. Everything mentioned here in this titled Kirk County Hazard Pay Criteria, everything that's, everything with the sheriff's department employees is meant in this. And probably then some.
Right. It doesn't, it doesn't have to change anything at all with the sheriff's department. You can still have the order that you adopted last week.
So this kind of falls, I'm sorry.
And then what you were presented with, with modifications or not, could be the criteria for the rest of the departments.
Which is where we left it last week.
Bingo. And my biggest concern is it's going to qualify.
Well, let me clarify. I think, I want to make sure that we're not confusing issues. There is no question whatsoever, but that public safety and the sheriff's office are eligible for hazard pay. Now you're talking about qualify. Qualify, we get back to evaluating the criteria. And in evaluating criteria, just like I said before, if you meet all five, you score five. If you meet four, you score four. Three, you score three. There is, what the, what Wood O'Brien was telling us is that we have not done the risk and exposure evaluations. And we do not have sufficient documentation on file to defend the decisions that we've made.
Going forward, because we were talking, the sheriff's department, everybody agrees meets all the requirements. I don't, I don't know-
They meet the requirements, but are they all the same risk? And the sheriff says yes.
We need to evaluate.
But he needs to submit that.
And we need to have paper in our file to be able to show these auditors that we've evaluated every person's risk that we have approved hazard pay.
That's what we're saying, that, I'm not going to argue with the sheriff. I mean, I disagree, but if he says that they're all, but he hasn't, you know, other than saying it here in court, we have nothing in the files other than these minutes that, yes, all my people are at equal risk, and here's why.
Right. The burden falls on the sheriff.
That's what we need.
That's what we have to defend with these federal auditors.
And the other part of it is with the, on the order, one of the main things that, the meeting I was at Friday was, the language that says availability of funds probably should not be in there. Yes, they approved this, and now they're saying that should not be in here.
The exact, the exact orders.
Can I jump in real quick, Lance? So my comment on the order, they did not approve our order. We discussed it with them via the phone, via the phone. They told us to add in the ability of employees to safely conduct their regular duties, and they asked us to put in that it was during these unprecedented times. We added the word hazard pay for the $5, just as clarification that that was what the $5 was. So while it was discussed with them, they did not actually receive this and approve this specific order.
So that's correct about the availability of funds. They recommend now that that not be in here?
The one on Friday, which was a different time than the Friday before, did state that.
In fact, I believe the way she worded it was, it's a red flag. It's a red flag to the auditors. When they get it and they look down there and see that we've made this subject to the availability of their funding, then it's almost like there's an assumption they're trying to take advantage of us, rather than they really have a genuine need in that community that they're trying to meet. And so the advice was, you're better off to take that kind of wording out, because you won't, it won't draw the attention to these auditors when they look at it the first Which I appreciated the advice.
Yeah, it's a line of change.
Yeah. It's not changing the content of the order, it's just cleaning out some language that our consultants are saying we probably should not include.
Well, it's prudent to listen to somebody you hired for this very purpose. The sheriff had a valid point. They didn't bring this to our attention until he brought it up. So are we really getting our bang for our buck, would be my question on that. And it's wise to clean up the wording on it, so that we protect the county and the taxpayers. This is federal money, which we all pay into, but if they, if they decided to reject our grant, then we'd be on the hook for it. So that's what we're trying to avoid, right? Just so our brain knows, I mean, they're very watching, all this discussion has been about.
And that's all we've asked, is to give us time to fix it. And here we are.
I don't think, though, that we, I mean, we may be overthinking it a little bit. We're just trying to, this is, as everybody has said, unprecedented times. We've heard that over and over and over again. And now suddenly, we've got to stop. You know, we were told, you can't go to work, you can't do all these other things, you've got to change your whole life. And now we try to help, and they go, time to stop and look at it. All of a sudden.
Well, it's not them. They're giving me advice and I'm listening.
It's our legal counsel.
And it scares me. It scares me, the exposure that our taxpayers will have.
Wasn't your legal counsel? It was the advisor, or the consultant.
I'm sorry. Wood O'Brien, Wood O'Brien was telling us that-
Consultants.
We can do this better. So we've learned that we can do it better. Let's do it. Why not?
Well, back to Rusty's point, they missed this. They didn't advise us that this was available dog.
Yeah.
And that is really part of their job. So now all of a sudden, we go, well, wait a minute, they said something to us. They paid attention to us, and now we're going to change everything we did last week. I'm a little irritated about it. I mean, we, we did something last week in good faith that helped, was going to help some of our most exposed employees. Now we're going to pull it back, and for all appearances, because some people- Now we're going to pull it back and for all appearances, because some people complained about other employees. That's what it looks like.
We don't want to pull it back. What we want to do is fix it. Nobody wants to pull anything back. We need to do the evaluations and we need to document them, and we need to put them in the file. That has to be done.
Sure.
And I don't have a problem with continuing, you know, cleaning up the order a little bit, which is pretty minor. And I don't have a problem with continuing it, but I think that the sheriff in the next week has to come back with some documentation justifying, you know, what we're doing. Other than just saying that they're all, they all qualify. I don't think this, the statement that the law says that law enforcement qualifies is an evaluation that, yes, every one of his people need the money and here's why.
But that's not just to satisfy your curiosity, it's also to do with the judge said, which is have firm documentation.
Right.
Okay.
I agree with that.
And it can be done, I don't mind that being done retroactively as long as it's done in the next week. Put it back on the agenda, and if it's not in, and I'm sure the sheriff, because he's pretty anxious to get this through, would hopefully do that.
So can we pass this today with a revision? Just have a revision?
Cleaning up the language.
Clean it up.
There you go.
So it satisfies what we need to do.
But we still don't have the paperwork.
But we will.
The court passed something last, the court passed something last week that was not very thorough. We need to fix it.
What additions would you put in it, Commissioner Moser?
I would say that just exactly what the agenda item says, we need to establish a policy. We don't have a policy. I think what the agenda item was is to consider rescinding, I think we should rescind the court order from last week and establish a policy and bring it back to the court.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Which order?
There really, there really two orders. There's, there's, and I've got a copy of them here, there's 38265A and 38265B. A says that we adopt a hazardous pay policy for Kirk County employees who qualify according to the Corona Aid Relief Economic Securities, Security Act grant not to exceed five dollars per hour. And then B says that authorizes a hazardous pay for the Kirk County Sheriff's Office and County Jail employees who qualify according to the Corona Aid Relief Economic Security Act grant in an amount not to exceed five dollars per hour. And said policy be effective through 12/31/2020. So there's really two orders.
Well, that's, I thought there was wording in there about until the funds run.
That is.
That's in the, that's in the order.
Well, it was, what you just read, it doesn't have one.
It's in that order, that paper order. There's like an additional order with that.
I know.
That's the judge had last week.
It's sitting on my desk. I know where he has it. The order that we're talking about that has the fund availability in it is the one that the sheriff brought, not the one that the county clerk prepared after court. Because she's broken it down into an A and a B. A is the policy and B is the order.
So it's B then I might commit. B is for regarding the motion.
Okay. I'll second that. We have a motion and a second?
Judge, I want to read through these real.
Okay.
My comment is, I think A needs to be rescinded, not B.
Doesn't A establish a policy?
A says.
It says it does.
Approve and adopt a hazardous pay policy for Kirk County employees who qualify according. That's what we don't have.
That's exactly what we don't have.
I'll, I agree with rescinding that, but B is talking about the Sheriff's Department, and I disagree with rescinding that.
Good.
I don't have it in front of me. So A, A said, it doesn't say establish a policy, it says adopt a policy.
Correct. Right.
We need to establish a policy, so with me not having that in front of me, what's, what's the best way to establish that motion?
Well, A, the A, the A order says that we are supposed to adopt a hazard pay policy. The B order specifically gives to the sheriff's office and the jailers not hazard pay not to exceed five dollars per hour.
But that could be inconsistent with the policy.
No. Because he already, he already complies with everything that's in the proposed policy now, Tom.
But that was our discussion about administrative staff doesn't have the same risk as the frontline officers.
That gets into the evaluations, not the eligibility.
Okay.
The evaluation. The risk evaluation.
Shouldn't the evaluation be part of the policy, Judge?
Absolutely.
Right.
But I mean, I think.
The criteria is the part of the evaluation. That's part of the policy. Evaluation falls under what's established in the criteria and the policy.
I don't understand what you're saying.
Evaluation is a process of going through and asking people whatever the criteria is set.
And that's back to my example. If we have five criteria, some people meet all five, some meet four, some meet three.
But you're mixing nouns with verbs. So you do an evaluation, right? That's a verb. You have a policy, that's a noun. That's apples and oranges. Does that make sense?
Well, no. But I mean, the way I look at it, maybe this is what you're saying, I'm not sure, is that to me, the policy includes the Sheriff's Department without question. So it's part of the policy, whether it's written in right now or not. We need to do a policy. All the rest of county employees, we need to get the policy written and approved, in my mind, next week.
Which is, last week, we've gone through all this, that's what we said last Monday.
Right. But now we have a lot more information. We're not talking about sheriff. Everybody except the sheriff.
Right.
And the sheriff, we can continue, to me, B can stay.
Yes.
But A needs to be rescinded.
Well, A, we, it says we're going to establish a policy is what it says basically.
No, we, it's approve and adopt a policy. It doesn't say we're going to, it says we've done it, and we haven't done it. We adopted a very, well, we adopted a policy. It's a very general policy.
We adopted the CARES Act.
Yeah, we adopted the CARES Act.
Whatever that means.
And that's already there. So to me, we need to clarify that policy. But to me, B can stay because it's going to be within the policy.
Yeah, right.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Okay. Talking hour and twenty minutes to get to that point, but yeah.
I still disagree with the sheriff on some points, but yeah, it's his office. Well, I see Ruston too short of it.
Well, that's where I thought we left it last week. We were going to put a policy together for all the other departments. The sheriff was going to proceed.
And, and I got into it and found out that it was, it's a, it's a big project.
Okay.
And we've made enormous progress on Friday alone. Spent all day on it.
I think we're close on a policy for everybody else, but I think the sheriff, we can move forward on it. We can do as long as we did last week, which will be effective tomorrow.
So does that change the motion?
Well, the motion is to rescind B, and there's a motion and a second.
Modify, modify the motion to rescind A and establish a policy.
Now, how are we going to get these evaluations? How are we going to get the paperwork necessary to be able to defend what you're doing?
That'd be part of your policy that you established that they have.
So the sheriff's office is going to do all of this after today? We're going to put it together?
I think as far as he's concerned, he's already done it.
No, it hadn't been done. That's the problem. It was across the board, and I think across the board is going to get us in trouble. That's what I've been telling you.
I think that he, I think we can approve it to go in place tomorrow, that he has verbally told us, I think he needs to reduce it to writing what his policy is going to be, what he thinks the criteria are.
I feel that Berkeley said it has been taken down by the court recorder in the minutes, and I'm asking that can you use that policy? You may want to change the funding.
Okay.
But I still think, Sheriff, you need to put it in writing, not just what you said here. I think you need to give us how you determine your policy.
Does the email that he sent you all satisfy that?
The question is, that my understanding is, we have to look at it a little bit by position. And there's no question, everyone in the sheriff's department qualifies. They all qualify at the same risk level. Sheriff's position is yes. I think he needs to say that, and that's the policy.
Well, but, but I think that number thirty-eight answer that we just read earlier said no. We couldn't do it across the board.
I don't think thirty-eight says you are doing it across the board, Judge.
It says no. When they ask, may you do it across the board? And the answer is no.
That's exactly right.
But is that across the board in a department or county?
It says about public safety employees. They're, they're different. Across the board is all the other employees.
Right.
The sheriff's office is public safety employees.
Right.
Thirty-eight is exactly right, the way it's working. I don't have a problem with it. And that's what I'm saying, this whole thing. It's already spelled out in thirty-eight.
But thirty-eight doesn't say that they're all the same. That's what I'm saying, Rusty. You need to tell us in writing that you consider all your employees equally at risk. Thirty-eight doesn't say that.
And I don't think that there's nothing in the, in the. Or the guidelines or anything that say that that is required, Jonathan. Thirty-eight says public safety. Then you have the first responder definition, which covers all my employees.
But it didn't say they're all the same, Rusty.
Why, why do they even have to be?
Because I think you have to have criteria.
Why do they have, this doesn't say that. The judge is wanting that, okay?
No, the consultants want it.
It doesn't. It wasn't the policy that was passed.
What you're saying is that public safety is a heading that involves everybody from the nine-one-one operators to the first responders. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
And first responders are a little bit different category, frontline guys.
But we're not making that distinction.
No, he's not. He says they're all the same.
But I'm, that's why.
And I don't buy it.
Are you?
First responders, you're saying that, right?
You, you've listed basically, you said, public safety, that's everybody.
Right.
Okay.
And it says, it goes on, question number one twenty-four, says, would hazard pay for essential employees, parentheses, first responders, who have been working COVID during, working during the COVID-19 responsibly, regardless of, okay? And if you go over to the Department of Labor's definition, that included in the email to you of first responders, it says sheriff's office, law, not sheriff's office, law enforcement officer, correctional institution personnel, emergency management personnel, nine-one-one operators, as well as individuals who work for such facilities employing these individuals and whose work is necessary to maintain the operation of the facility.
All that means is that they're eligible.
That's right.
Now we're talking about evaluate them.
They're eligible.
Evaluate risks. That's what we're being asked to do.
And I gave you all what I recommended for my employees. I gave you what I recommend, five dollars an hour. If you want to recommend for Dawn's ten dollars an hour, or she wants to, if she can come in here and justify it and say it, I told you my justification, and the order was passed.
But it will not pass federal audit, and that's my concern, and that's the liability to the taxpayers. Just because you say it's all equal, doesn't mean that it is.
And just because you say it doesn't mean it is either, Judge. We can go tit for tat for that, okay? And I worked grants here for forty years on this stuff. But what I'm saying is, what I've been hearing from the, from the consultants has been back and forth so much, it's unreal. And I think the grant says it directly. It says in number two on it about funds for the design, the fund is designed to provide ready funding to address unforeseen financial needs and risks created by the COVID-19 public health emergency. For this reason, and as a matter of administrative convenience, in light of the emergency nature of this program, means it's an emergency nature, a state, territorial, local, or tribal government may presume that payroll costs for public health, public safety employees are payments for substantial services for substantially dedicated to the mitigating.
They're eligible. We all agree on that.
Why do we keep going over these definitions? We all agree.
Because you're adding stuff in there that's unnecessary and that I've already justified.
It just says, okay, they're eligible. When you say one, one dollar, you ask for five.
I asked for five, and this court approved it.
And we're saying now, to tell us, we know they're eligible, we're asking you to tell us what level is.
I did.
We need to.
Judge?
Yes?
Judge, I, I make a motion, we rescind A and B and establish a policy, A and establish a policy for the entire, all, all departments in the county, including the sheriff's department.
We only have a motion on the floor.
We already have one?
No, he withdrew it. Well, do you withdraw all your motions, except this last one?
I withdraw the first motion, modifying the motion.
So your motion is to rescind A and B?
No. And establish a policy for all departments in the county, including the sheriff's department.
Okay. I'll second that. Discussion?
Well, I thought we were pretty close about five minutes ago, ten minutes ago. I think it just, we need to clean up the wording on last week's. I agree that we just need to go forward with the sheriff's department.
Well, that's establish a policy.
Well, I, I think we, I'm not for rescinding it. My two cents, we need to go forward.
We, we spent an hour and a half trying to clean it up, and we've been zero, zero success.
Ms. Lance?
Yes. My understanding last week, and I just want this clarified on the record, when I stood up here, I was talking on supporting the sheriff's office to get their hazardous duty pay. I understand for everybody else within this county, there's guidelines that have to be met and followed in order for those people to get that. So I don't want anyone to pursue, assume that I was sending anything in requesting from my clerks. Do I request it? Yes, but I will wait on that. So I was a little offended thinking that I was thrown or anybody else within the county throwing in stuff trying to get hazardous duty pay. Everybody's deserving that worked. Everybody.
He's hollering to my outside.
So I just want that clarified, and I do back the sheriff's office, and I know what those clerks go through because I'm sitting in that courtroom over at the jail when they're having to handle those prisoners. So yes, all clerks are exposed to it, whether y'all believe it or not. At what level? In his department? I mean, I think it's pretty risky, but mine may not be as risky, but we still all have, all have the exposure. Thank you.
Well, you have to read, you know, we're cherry picking the guidelines that we're talking about here. There's a lot, there's like, I don't know, that question answer thing is what, fifty or so questions? And a lot of it talks about mitigating and whether you can mitigate and a lot of different risk factors. So there's a lot of issues that go into it. That's why I think the judge, and I agree with this on this part of it, we need to have a policy that clears, is it a new risk? The sheriff clearly, his whole department qualifies. It's all eligible. He thinks they're all the same. I think all I'm asking is that he tell us that and have some criteria for it so that we can have an audit trail when we get audited.
He did. He said it was all public service.
And he said, and he says that it's because he said it here in court. And it's court, so I'm, you know, I'm not sure if that's gonna.
But the final review is not going to be us believing the sheriff's evaluation. It's going to be whether or not the auditors believe.
Right.
And that's what's at risk.
But all I want is a, something that's, we can point to and say, the sheriff gave us some criteria, he thinks everyone is equal, and here's the reasons why, and have it in a document as opposed to having to say, tell the auditors, well, yeah, the sheriff said go look at our minutes from a court meeting.
And I'm sure the sheriff is willing to do that, right?
Yes.
Okay. That satisfies it for me. Let's take care of the sheriff's department. We'll get to the rest of them.
It's called question. Let's vote on what's on the table.
But if you're going to rescind it, we're going to start all over, then I'm going to ask that it be put retroactive. My people are still facing this every single day.
You're gonna have to restate what's.
The motion that's on the table is to rescind both these orders. 38265A and 38265B.
And just for the record, the county attorney said that she approved it last week because she saw no need, there was no problem with it legally. I agree with her, that's why I stated it the way I did, including the fact that it would be subject to the rules of the grant. I don't know how you can go wrong if you include that in there, so.
It's not in there.
It's not in the order.
That's what I had said.
Not in the order, the written order.
That's what he.
That was what my statement was when I proposed it.
Well, there is an order. We talked about it. It is not one that the county clerk prepared, drafted for us. It's the one that the sheriff brought that I signed after Commissioner's Court last week that is sitting in on my desk, and it is entitled, it's numbered, the same number?
It's, no, I gave the incorrect number, so the number is still numbered.
So you're telling me that we passed something in court and something else was substituted for it later?
No. No. Hold on just a second. Let me get here. Everybody can see.
Did he look at your agenda? Agenda, the order he sent, the agenda. This is part of the email, I think it was.
Yeah.
And so here's the order that was, I believe, the language of the order that was signed. You want me to have?
Here is the order that was signed, right here. Okay? And it is number 38265A. And we discovered after I signed it that it really needed probably be B. Nothing's been changed on it. It's still the way it originally was. This is the exact order that the sheriff brought and I signed. It is not the order that's before the court today. But this is the order right here. This is what we're trying to, we're talking about rescinding. So let me just pass it around to you. And you'll see it has the available funds language in it.
I think what Hardy was talking about, Judge, is there was two different motions made in talking to A and B last week. The first one was the policy that there should have been a court order on saying that you adopted the guidelines of the grant. That's what Hardy proposed. The second one was, and there should have been an order drawn up for that. That's where she's talking. She named them from A and B.
That's what this is.
Would have been, okay? And that should say in it, because that's what Hardy's motion was, to adopt the guidelines, that's the policy.
It does not say that.
But if you go back to the minutes, that's what it was. That's what his motion was.
According to the coronavirus aid cares act grant, so authorized hazardous pay office of the, per county sheriff's office and county jail employees who qualify according to CRF grant. So that was what I understood.
I believe he said guidelines in there. If you'll go back and read the minutes. But that was A. B was the order I brought to the audit, okay? And it is actually the orders before you today because that was the addendum that was added to the, to the agenda. That if you, if you, yeah, item 111. If you ended up withdrawing both of those because if you felt that one was wrong, being the first one, and that negated the second one, and I just wasn't sure, so I called the county attorney and asked her, what should I do? She said, just be on the safe side, put the same thing back on the agenda again. So I had to get Jody to put it on early because we were running out of the 72 hours, right? And she put item 111 on there, which is the same order again that you could adopt today if you ended up throwing out the two, to adopt that one so that we could continue moving forward with the sheriff's office employees, okay? And the only revision, I would say, in that one is if you want to take out about the funding, take that out, but adopt 111.
That's what I thought we had arrived on a minute ago.
Well, that's the agenda item 1.11 that we have not gotten to.
But in our discussion just now, we had arrived at that point where we were going to take that wording out and just revise it and make it simple. That's what I thought I heard.
So is what we want, I'm asking, do we want to get to item 1.11? Because that's the order that you, somebody wants to make a motion to enact. So do we rescind at this point the A and the B here that we did and start over on 11?
Well.
I don't want to waste that hour and a half of discussion. Let's go straight from this one to 111.
I think the 1 and 11 are basically the same. Provide us with the same. And the question I get is of the county attorney is, rather than rescinding, so that we can clarify, can we amend the court order and take out that language about funding?
You can amend the court order because it says clarify, take out the language about funding so that that order doesn't have the language that is unsaid current to the consultants.
Okay.
And then that way, and I think that you also don't have to rescind A, and you can plan to next week, adopt the proposed criteria.
Sure.
That have been presented and maybe modified before then.
My question is, we can not rescind it, we can just amend it?
Oh, B, is that right?
A.
Next week you're talking about.
Well, now.
Now.
If I'm looking what you're looking at, so I'm.
What I said.
The one with the language about running.
Let me propose this. Everybody's, let's take a break. Let's take a five-minute recess, give everybody a chance to regroup and come back and see where we are.
This is B. Larry, so you really?
Okay, where are we?
Well, there's a, there's a motion and a second.
Is Commissioner Moser still on the phone?
He said he's probably going to lose us.
Okay.
Which I guess, I think he lost us, or he's won. He said he's going to do bad celery. But the motion's still there whether he's there or not.
Is that how it works?
I don't know.
This is all new stuff. Make a motion and leave.
I think the motion that's on the table is to rescind the order with regard to the policy and the order with regard to sheriff's office and jailers. The A and the B order, is that what's before the court?
And then I also have an establish a policy for all departments in the county, including the sheriff's office. That was.
That was part of the motion.
I'm sorry?
The motion was to rescind 38265A and 38265B and establish a policy for all departments in the county, including the sheriff's office. And a second.
Okay. That's the motion that's before the court. Any more discussion?
And then we're going to get into 111 and go from there, right?
Well, we're not, I'm not leaving this one yet.
Well, I mean. 111 won't need to be dealt with, I don't think, if we do this. I don't think. Rusty said he put it on there just in case.
Call the question. Those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Those opposed, raise your hand. Motion fails. Let's move on to item 1.2.
I've got a motion to make on this item, so.
On this item?
Yeah. I have a motion that we amend court order 38265B by deleting the following phrase in the second to last paragraph or availability of funds.
Second. Whoa, 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 whoa. You're talking about this order now, right?
Later order. I want to delete those words.
And that's what's attached to agenda item 1.11?
It's also under this one.
Yeah, it's under both.
Yeah, it's attached to that, but I don't see why we can't act under this item.
111 is rescinded.
111 was put on the agenda in case you withdrew both on the first one. You withdrew A and B, and I wanted 111 back on there. But if you just want to leave, the last one, the last plea in A, you just want to amend B, I think it's back to deleting A.
Well, I'm confused. Is it in the notebook?
Item 111, I was telling them, look at that because your backup in 111 is actual order you were just passing around.
Right.
They want you to look at.
Yes.
But if you just amend on item 1, not a B, then you don't need to do 11.
Right.
Like you said, 11 was only on there in case you got rid of A and B and we started from scratch. You wanted to take it right away.
But now, the problem I have is you think that there's a B, then I don't think there's a B, okay? And let me just, lay them out here so everybody can stand up and look at them. This is what the sheriff brought last week that I signed, and it is entitled A, okay? Well, I'm just saying, that's the original. Okay. Now, this is what was in our packet for orders today. And here's the A, and here's the B. This B is different than this if it's B. And you're saying, B, I don't have anything that has B on it. When I look at the agenda packet, the order that I see is this one right here. That's what's in the agenda packet. This is.
It's the same in what you got.
This is different than this.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. Now, this, you can see that's a copy. You can see the seal on it.
Right.
And is the number changed on that one?
Well, smudged by me.
Well, one is mislabeled.
Well, Jackie and I have talked about this one. I haven't, we haven't done anything with it. It's been the exact original condition. Nothing's been done. And it says A.
But it should be B. That was this part of the error.
Clerical error.
You wanted to change that.
And so if that's the order under 1, 1, that you're talking about, that was just not rescinded, but it needs modification, the language that Commissioner Letts has just made a motion on, then that's probably clearly the order that Commissioner Letts is talking about and not what's attached as 111.
Can we, can, is part of my amendment, clarify that this is B, not A, based on the court order?
That would probably be great.
Yes.
May I amend my motion to include that the, on the court order that was signed by the judge where it says 38265A, it should read 38265B.
Okay. And that's this order right here that we're talking about?
That's this one.
Okay.
Which is that one?
Okay.
You have a second to accept my amendment?
So motion's been made by Commissioner Letts, seconded by Commissioner Hess, to do what?
It's called Commissioner Blue.
Commissioner Blue.
The motion is to delete the words of the second to last paragraph or availability of funds and to correct the court order number where to read court order number 38265B.
And are we going to print out another order and sign it as a B?
Yes.
So that those, so that the wording on available funds is completely removed from the document?
Yes, yes, yes.
So no auditor will see that in what we've been at?
My intent is to redo this order.
Okay. And what do we do with this?
Well, are we issuing a new order that would then have a new order number? I don't know why we can't just correct that like I'm not going to. I don't know if that's the same.
Well, they want to take out some wording.
They want to amend it.
Right, amend it. That's all you're doing.
It would be.
And then the auditors are going to see what we struck.
That's right. It would be cleaner to have.
Rescind it and.
Oh, I was just thinking it would be cleaner to strike through with initial by the judge and to make it be with initial by the judge because then it's on that agenda and this agenda, and so that someone doesn't get confused and have that agenda thinking that's the order as it exists when there's this as modified.
It doesn't, it seems to me it's simpler to, for me to withdraw that motion, rescind the original court order and make a motion for a new court order that incorporates the change.
So we want to rescind the A, the A order?
I'll withdraw my motion.
You're going to restate it?
Yeah.
I'll withdraw it, so.
Okay. I make a motion that we rescind court order 38265A as approved last week.
That was signed by me on August the 24th and filed with the county clerk's office on August the 25th, as the seal reflects.
Yes.
Okay? And we're rescinding that?
Yes.
Okay. I agree that we need to rescind this order.
Okay.
I should believe that's B. Right. That's it, it was a clerical error. So that really is B.
But it reads A on here, and that's in the court documents right now.
But A is what you talked about, the policy. B is, we'll just say Rusty's order is.
Well, I don't think we have an A order in her. I think the A order was what was in our packet today.
The A order is the guidelines that, with all the questions, I think, that's the A guidelines. Right. This, adopt hazardous pay policy according to the CRF grant.
The county attorney suggests that you strike through it and make the correction before we proceed, then we'll know which one we're talking about.
Exactly.
That makes sense to me because I don't think you know which one you're talking about. Because I'm watching the boss over here, and she's giving the head nods and all this.
The question, the problem is, though, whether it's right or wrong, the one the judge signs says A, it's a mistake. We acknowledge that, so we're going to rescind it and redo it as a new one.
But we're talking about making it, giving it the right name before we proceed is what I think is a smart thing to do.
I want to rescind it, and then I want to, if that passes, I'm going to immediately make another motion.
Okay.
I knew that was coming, but I want to make sure we're on the right one.
So that was a motion?
I made a motion earlier.
To rescind 38265A. Was there a second part to that and?
No, it's just to rescind it right now. It's going to be cleaner, I think, to do, rescind it and then do the.
Okay. And so I'm looking at the county attorney. This is the order. There is a different A in the packet today that has not been approved as an order yet,
3265A on the order next to the gavel refers to the guidelines that were adopted last week.
Right.
That order there that you were authorized to sign was under B.
Yes.
So there's a clerical error in the one that you were authorized to sign.
I understand that. But so that the record reflects what we're doing. The usual and customary practice is for the proposed or draft orders to be included in the packet the week after the action was taken by the court, which is usual and customary. And what we have in our packet today is an A and a B that we've referred to, okay? It's in the packet today. I just copied those places. We have a bunch of orders today. This, one that we're getting ready to rescind, was an order that was prepared, brought to us by the sheriff, and I was asked to sign it before it was ever approved by the court, okay? It was approved in court, but we didn't have the usual and customary review process where she brings the orders in, you review them, you tell us they're an order, we adopt them per recommendation. And so the order that we're getting ready to rescind is very unusual. It was out of the usual routine. And for good cause, we need to rescind this. It was presented to me unilaterally for signature.
I thought it was because of the wording. Trying to get rid of some wording.
But that's what we're going to do now.
Protect ourselves from the audit.
But this was highly irregular.
It was a prepared order to present to Commissioner's Court to authorize you to sign.
Which happens a lot with resolutions, and it happens. It's not highly irregular.
I think the typed in order number at the top, I gave the wrong court order number and.
That's just clerical.
That's clerical. So really, I mean, I think, county attorney, what did you say about marking out something?
It could be a motion to modify that order so that it is identified with the correct B and has the offensive language of fund availability taken out. And I think that that would be clean. However.
But I think the reason, I don't want to speak to the judge, I'm sure he corrected if I'm not. The reason is that the preference is to not have a crossed out availability of funds for auditors. It'll be back, they go back to our court order. But it would be cleaned up if there is a clean order as to what we're doing. That was why I made a motion to rescind.
Mark second.
And, and frankly, just as part of the discussion of this, this motion, I would prefer that whatever order we eventually end up, this court ends up adopting, be done through the regular channels, with the county clerk preparing the order, such to whatever input she needs, but not to have something that was completely freestanding and separate like this one was.
So you, you, through your approval of the orders, modify, like often happens, when, when y'all approve the orders, modify that order to include the language of the sheriff's order and give it the number that it's been assigned already with a B, which often happens with orders and resolutions, and the language is read into it, the record, and it's, and the exact language is included. It, it's pretty simple, I think.
Sure. Well, I want to vote to rescind this.
What my motion was.
Can I suggest that, Jonathan, since there is an identical order as item one point one one, that you go ahead and rescind this one, that way the order's done, it's gone, and you make a motion, you call item one point one one, and pass that order with the clarification that the available fund language is taken out, then you've got a whole order, and as far as being your record, I don't agree with that, because we do bring contracts, orders, all kinds of different things to the county attorney first for her approval, and this court's asked me many a time, has the county attorney approved it, and y'all sign it? Okay, and that's what you, and that's the same exact thing that's been, was done to that, right? The county attorney that looked at it had approved it to be passed. Now, because of the consultant's, you know, opposition to that wording, you want to just change that wording, and I have no problem if you put that.
So if we eliminate, can we eliminate A and B and just have one?
Yeah, that's kind of what I thought.
B, B hasn't.
I mean consolidate them, I don't mean eliminate.
These, these have not even been approved yet, okay?
Okay, so we can't do that yet.
Right, we haven't, we haven't, we, we adopted them.
Orders of the court, they had, they were approved by y'all last week.
Yeah, by the vote.
That's what I thought.
And so they exist regardless of y'all, whether, whether y'all go back at the end of it and approve them or not, I mean, for years, this court has not gone through and reviewed all of the orders and approved them at the end, that's a recent development in this court's history, so the orders exist as they are.
And what you've done in recent, like Jonathan brings those.
You know, every court is, is, this is the way it reads, I think it really ought to read this way, and you change the wording. You get the order's already approved, you just change it, you know, adjust the wording.
That's all this should be, so it's simple. I agree with that.
I just want to vote on something.
Well, the motion right now is just to rescind it.
You got a motion in a second, so.
Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, four zero. Now, I'm going to deliver that order to the county clerk, it's no longer in my position.
And I still don't know why I can't make a new motion right now.
You can.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve the order that was in the agenda package today, which is this one, correct, Judge?
Under one point eleven, yes.
Under one, it was under one point eleven. However, I want to modify it by the second to last paragraph, deleting the words or availability of funds.
Okay. Second. Motion's been made by Commissioner Lex, seconded by Commissioner Harris, to approve the order attached to agenda item one point eleven with deletion of the phrase "or availability of funds." Correct?
Correct.
Judge to sign, say?
No, I'm not going to sign it. Those in favor, raise your hand. Those opposed, three to one. Motion carries. But for the record, I'm not going to sign that order, you get to sign it, because I think this is creating huge liability exposure for the county. Okay, let's go to item one point two on the agenda, consider, discuss, and accept certification. You know, let's stop, let's go to the nine thirty one, we got a timed one. I'm sorry, Nadine. One point ten, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action on a request for logistical needs for the National Global Day of Prayer and Repentance event scheduled for September twenty sixth, twenty twenty on the courthouse grounds.
And thank you for your patience.
Good morning. Uh, yes, sir, last time we were here, we had just asked for that day to be set aside for us, and this time, what we'd like to ask for is permission to set up banners, start on the thirteenth of September through the twenty sixth. And then we also had some logistics items that we had asked, we'd already coordinated with Shane, for our podium, electricity. We also asked that the courthouse remains open and a restroom facilities, and I understand that a deputy sheriff must be present during that time. And then also, we'd like to permission just to bring a trailer just to set up on the tar, well, the road, so we can use it as a stage.
The, the deal about the restroom didn't necessarily, that's not what we normally do, if I'm not mistaken, opens leaving the courthouse open and what have you. I think the rest of it sounds good, but I don't know about the restroom.
Well, I understand that that may not be what you usually do, but I also understand that we could ask for it, so.
Yeah, you can always ask.
Yes, sir.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve barring the part about the restroom.
Second.
So a motion's been made to approve the request, with the exception of keeping the courthouse open for the restrooms?
Yes.
Motion was made by Commissioner Harris, seconded by Commissioner Lex. Discussion, questions?
Well, if we had, if, if the courthouse was open, we'd have to have a deputy here and a phantom overtime and that kind of stuff, and so that's, plus the people coming in and out of the building have to be watched and so on, so it's really not a good idea. I mean, I don't expect anybody in the National Day of Prayer, or Prayer or Repentance, Global Day of Repentance, it'd be a problem, but you never know. If the doors are open, anybody can come in, so I would, that's the deal, it's not this group or each, it's not about your group.
Yes, sir.
It's about the logistics of it.
Okay, those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, four zero.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Rose.
Kim, what's your name?
Kim Rhodes.
R O A D E S.
R H O A D E S. Thank you, y'all like it.
Okay, Nadine, one point two, consider, discuss, and accept certification of unopposed candidates and issue an order the unopposed candidates elected.
Yes, sir, this is the, the local candidates that'll be on the November ballot that are unopposed, the Constable Precinct one, Tommy Rodriguez, Constable Precinct two, Carl Schneider, Constable Precinct three, Paul Gonzalez, Constable Precinct four, Brad Ryder, County Attorney Heather Steadman, Ste-.
Stevins?
Stevins, thank you. County Clerk's unexpired term, Jackie Doughty, Tax Assessor Collector Bob Reeves, and Commissioner Precinct three, Jonathan Lex.
Uh, the only one I'm confused about, Nadine, is Precinct three, Constable? I thought there was another candidate?
No, for the independent, they did not fa, bring any filings into your office.
Okay. Well, I think he did initially, didn't he?
I thought he did.
He brought in an intent in back in December, but he never brought in the petitions in the office.
Because I remember on hill coming in and, and did something.
Yes, sir.
Okay, verified.
And this, these candidates will be listed at the end of the ballots, under the heading of unopposed candidates duly elected.
I move for approval.
Right.
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Harris, seconded by Commissioner Lex, to approve the unopposed candidates as presented, as being duly elected. Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. One point three, Jennifer Dawes, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action for updates to the public sector's compensation study, procedural adjustments due to COVID-19.
Yes, sir. We have Sam Hines waiting to explain the, the changes, if you.
Do I need to call him?
Yes, sir.
I think while you're doing that, Judge, the, I handed out a one-page document. The underlying portions of that are items that I recommend we include. I visited with the sheriff's office, the tax assessor, and the county clerk, if they thought that was a format that they could live with of their employees.
Mr. Hines?
Yes, it is.
Uh, this is Rob Kelly, County Judge here in Kirk County, we have you on the speakerphone.
Okay.
And I'm going to put you up here so everybody can hear you. Good morning. Okay, this is Sam Hines, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Correct.
Sam, I was just going through the options that you laid out in the email to Jennifer, and then I, I think it was sent back to you from Jennifer with a couple of modifications.
Yep, I'd seen that email come through on Friday, and I had responded this morning. Those changes looked totally doable. Uh, yeah, I'm in agreement with the changes that you guys kind of were discussing.
I mean, with that, I think, you know, I didn't talk to all the departments, but I talked to a cross-section, and they thought it was workable. So I think we can proceed with the salary study.
Okay, um, yeah, really, from my end, you know, I think that we can get this started within the timeframe that I had listed in that email, so about three weeks from now, I'm going to require a little bit of information from Jennifer, from the Human Resources Department, just to begin building out some of the databases, but I do think, you know, it'll be easily able to be done, and within that timeframe, I think those meetings that we have on the twenty first through the twenty third, it'll be important just to kind of clue in the department heads about the two components of the study, and then just get some of their feedbacks so that we make sure that if employees have any questions, that they have kind of a representative or somebody to go to who kind of knows what's going on or what the plan is. Um, and then, following up with those, either Zoom calls, or I can do an individual call to each department head, however you guys want to structure that, we would send out that link on the twenty fourth, that would have like a employee briefing video that we would upload to our company YouTube channel, and then, um, the link to the online PAQ that we would be working on building out over the next few weeks.
The, um, one thing that I found out, or came to, to light when I was busy with some of the other departments, is that the biggest problem we have on the Zoom calls is that we don't have cameras on majority of the county computers. So we're going to have to, there will be some logistics to figure out, this is, see the IT.
Sure, maybe we just do an individual call to each department head, how many departments do you guys have?
Probably twenty-five or so. And some of them, like, I visited with the sheriff on this, I mean, he would probably want, or says he probably is going to want some of his supervisors in on this as well, because they're going to have to participate, so like the Sheriff's Department will probably be one call. Rhode and Bridge may do it the same way, I haven't talked to Kelly, but.
Yeah.
There will be some coordination due to the limited number of camera laptops that we have in the county, you can use, I know phones, but they're not as good to use, these calls. The other thing, saying that, we talked about at court last week, was a, a few other things that I'm not sure that they're specifically outlined in the scope of work, but we definitely, I think, want you to look at them, is things that, things like our longevity policy, our retirement contribution rate, um, overall, our, uh, grade and step, what do you call it, schedule, it seems very complicated to us, and really, we're looking at, is there easy ways to kind of modify these, or are we in line with other counties are doing? So we're not looking at a whole lot of work, we're just trying to, kind of a overview and give us some feedback as to what other counties do, especially like on the longevity policy and retirement rate.
Personal leave as well, vacation.
Okay, so maybe just kind of like a little bit of a benefit survey, looking to see.
Right.
Um, what other people may offer, like as additional or incentives.
Right, and then, like, our vacation, uh, personal leave policy, kind of if we're in line with what most other governmental entities are doing or not. So they're kind of a general thing, is see if we're kind of in line with other agencies.
Okay, I have like a template of a benefits survey that we typically do, and I can send that over to Jennifer and see if we need to add some items to that, but they typically cover those things that you just discussed, the retirement, longevity pay, we would look at vacations, sick leave, holidays, um, if they offer any sort of certification pays for, um, like TECO licensing, or, um, wastewater certificates, anything like that.
Yes, that's exactly, so just a general review of our benefits policies.
Okay. Kind of the other thing that was on my radar was, at some point, discussing the comparators to the survey, I don't know if we need to get discussing that, like, right now, I think we can do a post-job classification study, um, really, we won't want to start the survey until after October one, because that's when a lot of pay plan changes will go into effect, so I think we have up until then, um, you know, to begin thinking about who you guys would want to include as survey comparators. I'm not sure if you guys have a historical list that you guys have used in the past. Um, typically, what we propose is more of like a geographic-based model, where we look at, um, other agencies that provide the same services, and maybe your employees commute through on their way to work, um, places that you guys have historically lost employees to, or recruit employees from. But before we begin soliciting some of that information from the comparator agencies, I would like to have a conversation with the relevant officials, or with the relevant stakeholders, to, you know, make sure that we have a blessing on that comparator list before we go and ask for all of that information.
We can come up with a list of what we've used historically, and historically, we've looked at, uh, the neighboring counties, or at least three of the neighboring counties, primarily it's Kendall, Gillespie, and Bandera, and then we've also looked at counties of comparable size, such as Navarro is one that we frequently use, and.
Okay, so kind of like a hybrid model, based on geography, and then some that have similar characteristics?
Yeah, but we can come up with a list and, that we've used in the past, and any suggestions you have as well.
Okay, yeah, that sounds great. For me, that's really kind of the important green light that we need before we begin the salary survey, but I think, right now, the focus will just be on getting the classification base kind of going, and then maybe we can revisit, um, once that's rolling, or coming to a conclusion, and discuss the survey comparators.
Okay, and I don't think we needed any action today, do we, we're just, because we already have a contract, we're just.
Yeah, I think we're just kind of talking through some of the specifics.
We're modifying some of the process, but I don't know that takes a different.
But based on Sam's summary email, we're going to go with option number one, the online approach, to get it started sooner?
Yeah, the online approach is modified.
Okay.
Now, I kind of have a problem with that, you know, when they submitted bids or whatever for this whole process, that, they figure in travel and accommodations, staying here a while, and, and so, that hasn't changed, but the fees remain the same, because I came in prepared to vote for option two, where they come and do it in person, and, you know, we're getting lesser service for the same price, in my opinion.
You know, I wouldn't, really wouldn't characterize it as a lesser service, um, we spent a lot of years developing the tools to be able to do it online, um, we could maybe save like a thousand dollars off for the travel costs, um, really, we were, had just factored in, uh, the flight and then a rental car, since I'd be staying with a family in the area, so really, the travel wasn't too much of the budget, but we could discuss that, maybe reducing it by a thousand, two thousand dollars just for the flight.
And the additional benefit things that they're going to look at weren't in the original contract either, so that would offset?
So Sam, are you saying we can trim five thousand dollars?
No, I didn't say five thousand, I said we'd be open to discussing.
Yeah, I heard him go up to it, too.
But if we could add in the benefit survey, since I don't think that was part of the official bid either, um, if that works, like, I don't know if we need to talk about that, I'm certainly open to it.
Good, you know, I, I appreciate that, but I think it does, does need to be discussed.
Sure.
Sure, yeah. I wouldn't really say that the quality of your product is. I wouldn't really say that the quality of your product is diminished.
Well, I probably didn't pick my words really well for that, but we expect a quality product either way, but you know what I'm saying, as far as, that was figured in way back when we started figuring, getting y'all, the guys down here. And y'all figured it in, what it's gonna cost you for travel and accommodations.
Yeah, we did that not to exceed billing, so I think, I don't remember what the rate was, it might have been $50,000, so we don't necessarily bill each item individually, but we did factor in, you know, a little bit of travel, but typically, that's not the largest expense, you know, within the budget for that. But if we needed to, I think we could take off $1,000 for the airfare for the rental car. We'd be open to that. Maybe throw in the benefit survey in exchange.
How many people would y'all normally send down here?
Typically, it'd just been me. So I would have commented, I would have done maybe two days of employee briefings, where we would get out in front of your employees. And we're gonna substitute that with the YouTube video. And then, really, that would have been the only interaction, I think, with your employees, is just the introduction of the study, maybe meeting with your department heads one-on-one. So other components of travel that, you know, will continue to be included in the study would be if we need to do any final presentations in front of the commissioner's court, like at the end of the study. I think right now, that's kind of still on the table. We can kind of see what happens as the year progresses, if travel is back as part of our policy, or if we needed to do that over a telephone call. But really, those would be like the main touchpoints, would be the kickoff for the study, and then kind of like the reporting at the end.
Well, we'll look at the scope of work. I'll get with Jennifer, because the scope of work, make a few adjustments to the scope, and we'll bring it back to the court next Monday. But I think it'll be basically along the lines of option one.
Okay, sounds good.
No action?
No action today.
Okay, Sam, thank you very much.
Thank you, Sam.
Yeah, thanks, talk to y'all. Be in touch, thanks.
Okay, item 1.4, consider discuss and take appropriate action to update the Kirk County policy regarding employees' payroll policies and procedures.
Yes, sir. We would like to, proposing to add some verbiage regarding the employees' responsibility for checking their paychecks, to see that they're accurate. And if they find any error, that they must bring it to the attention of the Human Resources Department immediately, and no later than before the next regularly scheduled payday. If the employee is dissatisfied with Human Resources Department response, they should bring their concern to the county attorney's office. We would like to add that under the compensation 2A-3 section of the current policy book.
I move for approval. Second, I think.
Okay. We've got a motion by Commissioner Ballou, seconded by Commissioner Letts, he thinks. Let's have a discussion to see where we are on this motion in a second.
The question I have comes back to a conversation I had with the county attorney primarily, that, two things. One, whether we make a mistake or not, we're responsible for paying our employees properly. And two, what do we do if an employee doesn't? We have it in policy now, or if we've adopted it in policy, what if they don't sign it? I mean, so it's kind of a...
So you need to call 1.5 also with this? Because that is 1.5, that verification.
Right, well, 1.5 is the verification referred to in the new policy. But, you know, my questions are, we need to do it, but there's no consequence for not doing it. And we're still obligated to pay them correctly, whether they sign it or not. So I'm very much in favor of trying to get this all behind us, and employees need to be a little responsible and make sure they're being paid correctly. But it comes down to, if someone means it. If we pay someone wrong, and they decide to sue us, we have no, we may have a little bit better defense, but we still don't have a defense whatsoever.
But I think you would... Will the employee get an explanation of what this is for one? Everybody wants to get paid.
Well, that's, maybe I'll go to the next one. Did y'all touch, excuse me, 1.5?
Okay, we still have a motion on the floor, I think.
Yes.
Let's go ahead and call 1.5 along with 1.4, and 1.5 is consider discuss and take appropriate action to implement the Kirk County Employee Payroll Verification Form, to be signed annually at the beginning of each new fiscal year.
So my question was, is there, in other words, if I'm asked to sign this, am I, is it explained to me as an individual, or I just read over it and then sign?
It's presented to new employees along with the handbook.
In the packet, yeah.
I understand, you're the...
And I will email it to the current employees as well, if this is adopted.
Part of the conversation that we had, if you remember, Sheriff, a week ago, between county judge, you, Jennifer, and he was that, after this is passed, if it's passed, then we have some conversations with the elected officials and directors, so that they can fully understand what comes next, and then, so they're not just gonna be handed a piece of paper and say, "Sign it." We'll be talking to their supervisors, so that their supervisors can have some fuller conversations.
Yeah. Well, I agree with Commissioner Letts, that this probably doesn't hold a lot of teeth, but I think it does bring awareness, that maybe people will jump on board and double-check their, all their information. Don't you agree, Kelly? I mean, that's the deal, you know, where it doesn't get logged wrong for a couple of years or whatever.
Right, and that's the main thing, in a timely fashion.
There you go.
And so with that, we're gonna need some help from the supervisors, just to make sure that none of their employees, their employees know what their seventh grade should be, they know how many years of service they've got, and they're confirming with us, y'all, HR, it's in their files, that they look at it, they've gotten a chew on it a little bit, and they think it's right, or wrong.
Hopefully, Letts will fall through the cracks.
Right.
And one of the, one of the issues when this came about is that past COLAs that we've received, they're not documented in the personnel file, which is, it's passed through the budget, and there's no, there's no tracking it. So I started last year, in everybody letter, saying, you know, "This is what your increase is gonna be, this is your eighth or step," just so there'd be documentation in the personnel files of what the employee made each fiscal year. But we'd like to expand on that, we thought we'd like to expand on that, so, and there's several versions of this letter going around, and Jonathan, you put some edits, and I like your edits, but then Heather has some concerns, so...
And part of the goal, and this would happen in the conversation that we have, is that y'all are informed, what Jennifer's office does, is they send that supervisor, director, elected official, here are your salary, here's the salary schedule for your department, please confirm that it's right. And so over the past, this will be the second time I have gotten my employees to have, I sent it to each of them, their portion of it, and said, "Confirm that this is right," responded in email, so that I can put that in your HR file, so that they're looking at it, they're paying attention to it, and they've confirmed to me that it's right, and it's not just me going, "Oh, I think that's right," and having to look back through everybody's personnel files to confirm it. They're having to do it, too. So it puts it on them to know, to know what they should, where they should be with the county. And so this will be an opportunity for all directors and supervisors to do that with their employees each budget season, saying, "Yep, this is where I am, seventh grade, these are my years of service," that's sort of the point.
Sheriff.
Well, and I agree totally with her, I think, and I think we know why, and we've seen some of those things happen. The only thing I'm curious about, and kind of concerned about, on these two forms, the new ones, it's verification form and that, we do have employees that their salary changed during the year, okay, and that form doesn't really address that. Now, we do have currently in use a form that's labeled Kirk County Payroll Change Form, that is used for all our employees, okay? And anytime there is a payroll change, the, it is put in there, the new salary, the per-hour, bi-weekly, annual, position, grade, step, all that is in there. The employee already signs it, and so does the department head or elected official. And I know in our office, we keep a copy in the personnel file we have out there, and we send the copy over. So I think this addresses a lot of things. Now, maybe it needs to be done at the beginning of each budget year also, if there's something like a COLA, or if there's a change in pay right then, so that it's done at that same time, and not just during the year. That may be more appropriate, that at any time there's any kind of salary change, a new one of these must be filled out, regardless of what reason it is.
So do we need the two forms?
And this letter, acknowledgement this is, to go at the beginning of each fiscal year, I will submit these to the department heads, and they can distribute them to their employees to sign. And then during the year, like Rusty said, any additional increases or promotions they receive, we get the payroll change form, that goes in the personnel file as well, so that's also documented.
I think, I mean, going back to 1.4, that was the motion for the policy, and I'm good with my second.
Okay. So, restate the motion.
The motion is, where were we at? We started with 1.4. To accept the policy, payroll policies and procedures as presented by Jennifer Dawson, HR.
Okay, and you?
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm good with the policy.
So we've got a motion and a second, any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, four zero.
Yeah, and then on 1.5, I think we may, Heather's handed me a modification to, I think we probably ought to look at that, and make sure that we get that right. I think that I handed it out a little bit today, I did not, failed to email it out to Jody last week. So I think we pass on that, and kind of make sure that we have that form correct, and bring it back next week.
Now, do we need this one, plus the one Rusty?
And that's, that's part of it, I think, you know, to have that discussion a little bit, do we need both of them? They're a little bit different, but they're similar. You know, I like some of the verbiage that I added to what Jennifer originally put, but anyway, I just don't want to rush and have to come back and change it.
Yeah, we don't want to do that again.
Yeah.
Got to laugh.
I like the idea of whether we use the form that we have and tweak it, or we have another form and we tweak that.
Yep.
The concept that the employees are buying into the legitimacy and propriety of what they're being paid, I think is important. And I appreciate there may be legal nuances that we may still have some responsibility for, but by and large, I would like, just me personally, I would like to see people commit to where they are with us, so that we can plan for the future, and not have those uncertainties hanging over our heads. So I think it's a good practice for the employees, and it's a good practice for the county.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 1.6, consider discuss and take appropriate action to discuss the President's Memorandum on Deferring Payroll Tax Obligations in Light of the Ongoing COVID-19 Disaster.
Yes, sir.
Here we go.
Oh, boy.
I, y'all have in front of you President Trump's memorandum, and it's kind of loose, vague, but I've done a lot of research, I've talked, we had a virtual chat with the TAC Legislative Conference. And what this is, is a deferral of the Social Security portion of the employee's paycheck, which is the 6.2% only. It's not a forgiveness, it's a deferral. And the President Trump requested, or basically said that the U.S. Treasury was going to give guidelines, they have yet to do so. Now, per the National Law Review, they have several opinions, there's several opinions. There's more questions than we have answers right now. Is this deferral going to be optional? When is it going to be paid back? If the employee leaves before it's paid back, is the county on the hook? There's also the president of ADP, which is one of the nation's largest payroll processing companies, and he said that, basically, it takes about a six-month lead time to make changes in payroll systems that are this large. And, you know, our, the system, the software that we use, they're still waiting for guidance from the IRS or the U.S. Treasury. So we have no updates in our current payroll system, and other counties that I've spoken with, same thing. So what the TAC Legislative Conference, what they suggest is that the court vote to do nothing until such time that you, that guidelines come out from the U.S. Treasury or the IRS.
Sounds good to me.
And part of the reason...
Oh, it's a train wreck.
Part of the reason for the court taking action is the, under the memorandum, it says, you know, in this effective September 1, which is tomorrow, it says, "Deferral shall be made available with respect to any employee whose wages..." So I think we need to do something, because we can't do that. We just don't know what the, how to do it, yet.
What was the recommendation again?
Basically, we choose to do nothing until there's guidance from the Treasury or the IRS.
So I'll make a motion that... As it relates to the Memorandum on Deferring Payroll Tax Obligations in Light of the Ongoing COVID-19 Disaster that was issued August 8, 2020, until the Treasury Department issues guidelines as to how to implement, we will do nothing.
So we're gonna abate any sort of action? We're not gonna do anything?
We're not gonna do anything. Now, we may have to go retroactive, if the Treasury tells us to.
That's what I'm concerned about.
But, and we may have to, but we just have to, at this point, we can't do anything, because we don't have the guidance from the Treasury Department.
So even though the President has issued an executive order to defer payment of these Social Security taxes, we're gonna do business as usual until we get guidelines from Treasury Department?
Correct.
Okay.
And his memorandum said the Treasury Department shall give guidance. So we're in compliance with his memorandum, because we can't do it, because Treasury Department...
And you may hear from them before your next meeting, so maybe something y'all pick up soon.
So.
I'll second that.
And also, it makes, it takes some time for the software provider, our software provider to make the updates.
Right.
So...
So the motion's been made by Commissioner Letts, and seconded by Commissioner Harris, to take no action with regard to the President's Executive Order on Deferring Payroll Tax Obligations until we receive the mandatory instructions from the Treasury Department.
Yes, that's correct.
Those in favor, raise your hand. And we're doing that on advice of Texas Association of Counselors.
Yes, yes.
Very good.
Thank you.
1.7, consider discuss and take appropriate action to approve $140 donation from a citizen for the Sheriff's Equipment Fund.
There was a group of people that raised money and ended up bringing barbecue to the sheriff's office one day for the employees, and then a little bit later, they brought back this amount of money, saying this was what they had left over, and they wanted to donate it to the sheriff's office. So that's why I'm bringing it.
I move for approval, second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Harris, seconded by Commissioner Ballou, to approve the donation to the Sheriff's Equipment Fund. Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, four zero. 1.8, consider discuss and take appropriate action to appoint Callie Gargano as replacement for Patsy Lackey Fleming as the Kirk County alternate representative to the Alamo Area Council of Governments Criminal Justice Advisory Committee. This is, Jody is one alternate that we have, and Patsy has asked to be replaced and designed, and so we thought, we'd do something different. Instead of taking, we'd bring up somebody like Callie that works in the auditor's office, and is specially dedicated to working on grants and grant administration, send her over there with these more experienced people, and hopefully she'll learn a lot, and we'll have an in-house resource going forward for many years.
Good idea, good.
I move for approval, second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Harris, seconded by Commissioner Ballou, to approve Callie Gargano as the replacement alternate representative to the Alamo Area Council of Governments Criminal Justice Advisory Committee. All those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, four zero. 1.9, consider discuss and take appropriate action to approve the contract with the Kirk County Soil and Water Conservation District. Allow me to sign it. Time to renew the contract, this is just routine?
I move for approval, second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Letts, seconded by Commissioner Ballou, to approve the contract with the Kirk County Soil and Water Conservation District. All those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, four zero. And I think that gets us through that part of the agenda, so we will go to the approval agenda. 2.1, pay the bills.
Invoices for today's consideration include Kirk County, $648,685.65. The airport, $16,733.89. Adult probation, $1,591.41. $16,733.89, adult probation, $1,591.40, district clerk fees, $361.06, and the 198th DA Forfeiture Fund, $42.80.
I move for approval. Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Harris, seconded by Commissioner Letts, to approve the bills as presented. All those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, 4-0. Budget amendments?
Yes, we have three today. One for indigent services, juvenile probation, and then the Hazard Pay Cares Act that we're allocating.
I move for approval. Second.
Commissioner Letts made a motion, seconded by Commissioner Harris, to approve the budget amendments as presented. Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, 4-0. Auditor reports?
There are not any.
Thank you.
Nor are there any late bills.
No late bills. I skipped over them again. I apologize. No late bills, good.
You were late on that.
And so now we have monthly reports.
We don't have any present today.
Okay. And court orders?
We do have the court orders.
We have a stack of them.
Yeah, we have a stack of them. Make a motion that we approve the court orders for August 24, 38238238275. I'm looking for the one that we've had so much discussion
With the exception of...
65? Yeah, with the exception of 38265A.
A and B.
And B.
I had a motion to rescind 38265A, that was the court's order. But was that, so?
They're still here, I mean...
We've adopted a new one.
But they're in the old, the old court orders.
So we rescinded on paper the one that had the incorrect court order number. So, but those two, but the orders in the stacks still may be...
I mean, we can't, we can't say that it didn't happen, it happened. Or they're in the, but is there a, an error?
Here's the problem as I see it, and we need to figure out how to fix it. We have the, the order that was signed that has been rescinded, and it was styled 38265A, even though it was intended to be a B, and we had a clerical error on that. That has now been rescinded. The, we have approved another order, which was item 11 on the agenda, okay? That's now the order that replaces the one that was rescinded. Okay? So when you look at these orders, the one that says A in the packet of proposed orders was intended to be for policy, okay? And I think the one that was adopted under item 11 on today's agenda was intended to be 38265B. And she has a draft of 38265B there that we do not want to approve. We do not want to adopt that, because you've adopted something else in its place.
Right.
So it looks like to me that 38265A in your packet should be approved as an order. And 38265B in her packet, not the one that we just adopted under Agenda item 11, should not be approved today. Am I saying that correctly?
So he could make a motion to approve it with the exception of that specific one?
Well, 38265B in the packet has been replaced with a different order that was under item 11 on the agenda. So in lieu of 38265B, we're going to substitute in what was done on the other order, and we will call it 38265B. But it will be that order instead of this one.
My, my problem with that is, on the 24th, we voted on these two. So there's got to be a reflection of it, but I don't know how we go in there and keep somebody in the public going back and going through our court orders, finding this, and not getting to the next week. And how do we, I'm looking to the county clerk to the...
Proper indexing, proper indexing, so that the public will be able to find it.
But to clarify, and I don't, go ahead.
Well, he moves that we accept the order. That's what we do every week.
Right.
When we have orders.
But...
We don't approve them, we don't accept it. The end. We don't accept it.
38265B.
Why do we have to, we don't have to, or we wouldn't bring it in here and approve it.
Because by order, by statute, you have to have, an order of the court has to have certain criteria, and that includes having enough, the, the reason why I take down that it's 4 to 0 or 5 to 0, is that has to be part of the court order. That's not in these orders. So when the court adopts an order...
But we're not going to adopt the order.
They approve to adopt an order. Well, which is what we did on...
But we did.
Is this, this is the final step of adopting an order?
But what, the order is a reflection, maybe, of what we did on the 24th, not what we did today.
But then why do you ask that the court accept the orders and put them in the record?
Because it's more from a clerical standpoint, we've made the correction. We don't wholesale get rid of an order. The question has been, sometimes the wording is all we ever change.
I know, and, and we rescinded it before we got to it.
And that's why the change in the procedure before the court, I don't know how long ago y'all started doing that, and I remember the recommendation being made, that let's bring the orders to the court, so we can make sure that it's what, the language in the order is what the court intended to do. And so that hasn't always been how it happened.
Right. And on the 24th, this is what we did.
I know.
Now, we undid it today, but we did it on the 24th.
But it's a, it's a cleaner paper trail to approve these, so it's in Laserfish, which is what the clerks uses. Then Jackie, she said, "Well, index." So when you pull up a court order, the court order's there. Jackie now, because of today, will put, the very first page is rescinded. She puts that on the order, so that's the way someone would know it's no longer a bill, and she'll put rescinded on today's date.
Okay.
So that's, that's the way. It's just a good paper trail to keep it, because it's in Laserfish already. Then she'll put something like on page one, that order is rescinded today, so people know it's no longer available.
Always link together from here on, I guess.
But I'm just looking at the two of you. Are y'all comfortable with us just approving the orders as is, or not?
I'm not, Commissioner, I don't have any.
Well, but y'all are the ones that are going to index them and file them and all that kind of stuff.
I want the court to tell me what to do.
But I think my, my, I think we need to approve them. My question is, is there a clerical order between the A and the B that we, that was a mistake?
Not in these.
Right, not in those.
In the one last week, yeah.
What's that mean, last week? Is it, should one of these be B and one of the other one be A?
This should have been B.
That shouldn't have been B.
And that, and, but, previously on 1-1, today, we rescinded 38265A according to this, not that packet. So if you want to approve orders, I would recommend you make an exception for 38265B, just as the judge was kind of explaining, because we didn't correct this one, which...
Yes.
Didn't happen. So we have to make an exception.
Should there be a, maybe, can we put a note after the title, and say, "Should be Order 38265A?" I'm just, I'm confused on the clerical part of that. I think we need to approve.
What we should have done is what the county attorney suggested early on, have the judge strike through it, put another letter on it. It's too late, I guess, now. Is it too late now? Because that...
We rescinded it, I don't think you...
Yeah, I know, it's been a month. I tried.
So we, she tried, yeah. Sometimes people don't listen when there's a voice crying in the wilderness.
I think you can do that, Commissioner Letts, and make a motion to clarify those two court orders with the, making the one at the bottom, 3265A, to match this one as rescinded.
Can we just add that note? Can you add that note up under the heading?
I can add that note if the court is okay with me adding that note on my own authority, I guess.
What?
The more we mess with this, the more attention we're drawing to it. You know the first rule of hole digging. When you find yourself in a hole, quit digging.
Well, I think we did them, so my motion is that we approve the court order.
Son of a gun. I'll second that.
I'll vote, too.
Motion by Commissioner Letts, seconded by Commissioner Ballou, to approve the court orders as presented. Those in favor, raise your hand. I'm going to abstain. I'm not wading in on this. Okay. Information agenda, 3.1, status reports from department heads. 3.2, status reports from elected officials. 3.3, status reports from liaison commissioners.
I was, the comment, I don't know if y'all heard, there was a pig sale at the Kentucky Department of Defense Center over the weekend, and it was partially online, which is, you know, and the top pig went for, I think, $11,900.
For a pig?
For a pig, and they sold 249 units, I believe. Very successful sale.
Wow.
A lot of, it was online, and there were 250 people that were for the sale. Pigs must be doing pretty good right now, because they brought some high dollar. And I presume it was a gill for a boar, I'm not sure, probably a boar, but anyway.
Yeah, it was a boar, and he probably stayed intact for that type of money.
Yeah, that's, anyway, I thought that was actually a good event out there.
Okay. Well, I think that closes out the agenda, except for an executive session item, I.S. for status report on a pending dispute. So we will adjourn into executive session. It is... 11:49, we will adjourn, adjourn into executive session, and it shouldn't take but just a few minutes. It is 12:24, and the court is coming out of executive session. I don't believe there's any action to be taken at this time, so the court will stand adjourned. Thank you.